Buenos dias, Hafa Day. The Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics Research and Planning is calling this public hearing to order. The time is now 1:34 PM on Tuesday, December 12, 2023. In compliance with the open government law, notices of today's hearing were published in the Guam Daily Post, provided via email to Senator stakeholders in the local media, and posted the Government of Guam Public Notices website. On Monday, December 4th, for the five-day notice, and Sunday, December 10th, for the 48-hour notice. I'd like to acknowledge my colleague who's here today, Senator Chris Barnett. Thank you. The purpose of this hearing is to receive testimony on four bills. Bill Number 186-37 LS, sponsored by myself and Senator Chris Barnett. It's an act to amend Section 6505, repeal and reenact 6506, and amend 6507, all of Article 5, Chapter 6, Title 11, relative to updating the use of tobacco fees and penalties to protect Guam's youth from the harms of nicotine and tobacco use. The second item of the agenda is to hear testimony on Bill 187-37, sponsored by myself and Senator Chris Barnett. It's an act to amend Section 6201 and 6202, to repeal 6205, amend 6206, 6209 of Article 2, and amend 6301 of Article 3, repeal 6401B, amend 6402, and renumber as 6403 of Article 4, amend 6702B, 6702R, 6706B, and 6706C of Article 7, and repeal 6802 and 6811 of Article 8, all of Chapter 6, Title 11, prohibiting the sale of tobacco nicotine products and vape products through vending machines on Guam. The third item on the agenda is to hear testimony on Bill 194-37 LS, sponsored by myself, Senator Sabina Flores Perez, and co-sponsored by Speaker Theresa M. Terlahi, Senator Chris Barnett. It's an act to amend Section 6209C of Article 2, amend 6306 and 6308 of Article 3, amend 6401, 6402 and 6405, all of Article 4, and amend 6603 of Article 6, all of Chapter 6, Title 11 Guam Code annotated relative to updating fines and penalties for tobacco nicotine violations. And the last item of the agenda is to hear testimony on Bill 195-37 LS. It's an act to add 6101M and 6101N to Article 1 of 6408, of Article 1, and 6408 and 6409 to Article 4, all of Chapter 6, Title 11 Guam Code annotated relative to regulating tobacco and nicotine advertisements. I'd like to also acknowledge my colleague, Senator Thomas Fisher, for being here. So the role of conduct for this hearing is as follows. Those who are called in advance to testify would be recognized first unless, you know, we have agency heads here. I ask that all written testimonies be submitted to my staff beforehand so copies can be made available. Those providing oral testimony, please restate your name before speaking for record-keeping purposes, and senators will have an opportunity to ask questions at the end of each panel. Questions and testimony shall be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda and personal inference as to character or motive of any senator. Individual testifying is not permitted. We do have a representative from the American Cancer Society will be providing testimony on Zoom, and please, for those that are providing testimony on Zoom, ensure that your video, your digital backgrounds are not allowed. I'd like to acknowledge my colleague here today, Joanne Brown, Senator Joanne Brown, as well. Now to begin our agenda, to hear testimony on Bill 186-37 LS, sponsored by myself and Senator Chris Barnett, an act to amend Section 6505, repeal and reenact 6506, and amend 6507, all of Article 5, sorry, Chapter 6, Title 11, sorry, it should be Article 6, Title 11, relative to updating the use of tobacco fees and penalties to protect Guam's youth from the harms of nicotine and tobacco use. So I'd like to provide some opening statements at this time. Bill 186-37 aims to update the current statute in order to ensure that tobacco and nicotine license fees and penalties pursuant to the Guam Tobacco Control Act are directed to government programs responsible for regulatory efforts, prevention, and education of tobacco nicotine use on Guam, and expand the capacity of operations within these programs, namely the Compliance Branch within Department of Revenue and Taxation, the Peace Office of the Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center, and the Bureau of Non-communicable Disease within Department of Public Health and Social Services. The 2021 Guam epidemiological profiles show the following alarming findings. Tobacco consumption remains higher in Guam than in the U.S. for both adults and youth. Smokeless tobacco use among adults is nearly double the U.S. rate, and smokeless tobacco use among Guam youth is almost triple the U.S. rate, with micronesians having the highest rates of smokeless tobacco consumption. Electronic cigarettes use is high among our youth. According to the 2021 Epi Profile, one in four of high school students and nearly one in four middle school students reported current use. Tobacco-related diseases are the major cause of death on Guam today, and tobacco control policies are closely associated with reductions in smoking prevalence and smokeless tobacco use. Between 2018 and 2022, approximately 106 citations were issued for noncompliance amongst the 329 licensed tobacco retailers. According to the recent SINAR report published in December this year, there was a decrease in compliance from 97% to 94.8%, with the addition of electronic nicotine delivery systems, or ends. Of the 13 businesses that were noncompliant, one retailer recited for its fourth offense within a five-year period for selling to a person under the age of 21. The store subsequently was fined $10,000, their license revoked, and will not be able to apply until 2026. Bill 186-37 proposes to update the distribution to where the fees and fines go. Currently in law, fees and penalties assessed shall be deposited to the following accounts: 30% to the Department of Parks and Rec, Iphilin Sports Fund, which is now inactive and has been repealed by Public Law 36107; 20% to the Health and Human Services Fund, which is created to receive funds from the tobacco settlement funds; and 50% to the Youth Tobacco Education Prevention Fund. Bill 186 proposes to distribute the funds, with 20% going to the Better Public Service Fund, to the Department of Revenue and Taxation's Compliance Branch, assist with compliance and enforcement of tobacco nicotine laws, rules and regulations pursuant to this chapter; 30% to the Health and Human Services Fund for the Department of Public Health, Social Services, Non-communicable Disease Division, for the purposes of providing tobacco nicotine education prevention services, comprehensive cancer, breast cancer, cervical cancer care; and the status quo, 50% to the Youth Tobacco Education Prevention Fund, which will go to the Peace Office within Guam Behavioral Health. The shift in funding to compliance could assist in curbing access to tobacco nicotine products to those under 21 years of age, and could bring additional funding to prevention and education programs with an increase in enforcement. Additionally, although many of these programs are primarily federally funded, the funding is not enough to meet epidemic proportions of tobacco nicotine use on our island, especially amongst our youth. Additional funding can go towards prevention, cessation, compliance, and enforcement. Bill 186 also increases accountability that the funds are deposited promptly instead of quarterly, particularly with the dwindling amounts of the master settlement agreement funds. I want to thank my co-sponsor, Senator Chris Barnett, and I look forward to the testimony. So for today's public hearing, we did invite Acting Director Marie Lozama from the Department of Revenue and Taxation, Director Arthur San Augustin from the Department of Public Health, Director Teresa Ariola from the Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center. We also invited the Office of the Attorney General, Department of Administration Director Byrne, and Customs and Quarantine. A fiscal note was received on October 31st. It basically states, absent comments from DRT as to how much of these fees and penalties are to be earmarked, the Bureau is unable to ascertain the fiscal impact of this proposed legislation. So I would like to invite all those that have come here today to provide testimony. We have Director Ariola from Guam Behavioral Health, if you can come to the front. We also have the Office of the Attorney General, Representative Fred Nishahara, I believe. We also have Dr. Annette David, Health Partners LLC. We have also Customs and Quarantine, if you can come to the front, if you have any testimony to provide. Also Lily Vence from the Guam Youth Congress, and I believe there's additional seating for anyone else who wishes to provide testimony. Okay, so first on our list is Dr. Annette David, or perhaps maybe we can, okay, yeah, Dr. David.
Good afternoon, senators and colleagues in the Guam community. Blessed, good afternoon to all. Senator, what I did was to combine my testimony for all four bills, so I don't know if you would prefer that I maybe be the last one to go?
It's up to you, yeah. I think you can go ahead and read your whole statement, and we'll include that accordingly.
All right. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to provide testimony on these four bills. I am submitting this oral and written testimony in my capacity as a public health physician who has been working in global tobacco control for over 30 years. During this time, the world has solidified the evidence for what comprise sound tobacco control strategies and policy initiatives. One key issue learned and demonstrated in multiple countries is that a comprehensive approach is necessary to effectively reduce tobacco use, including e-cigarettes and other electronic smoking devices, and to prevent its uptake among youth. In medicine, we teach health providers the five As of tobacco cessation. I would suggest that there are also five As for tobacco prevention, and these would include e-cigarettes, and these are five As that policies and programs need to address altogether. They include availability, reducing the supply of tobacco products, including e-cigarettes; access, restricting the ability of youth to get to these products; affordability, raising the prices through taxes to make them unaffordable by young people; acceptability, reconfiguring the physical and socio-cultural environment to denormalize smoking, chewing, and other forms of tobacco use, including e-cigarettes; and finally, the fifth A, attractiveness, prohibiting anything, including advertising, promotions, and other means that glamorize smoking, chewing, and other forms of tobacco use. So it's important to be able to address all these five As so that we can have an impact on our population's health. All of these five As must be dealt with, and it's very encouraging that these bills are addressing some of these As. Guam's tobacco control advocates have been fortunate to receive technical assistance and education from national partners, including the American Cancer Society and the Public Health Law Center, as well as the World Health Organization, on good practices and model language to address the issues covered by these bills. Some general comments that apply to all or most of the bills are the following. Now, the first is the data. In the rationale sections, the Guam Epi Profile 2021 update, published in 2023, is quoted for prevalence data. However, I wanted to let you know, senators, that the most recent data is even more alarming. The data that you have quoted, one in four of high school and middle school students using e-cigarettes was from 2017. The last year for which we had data was 2019, and in two years' time, the current use, we're not talking about experimenting or trying, but current use of these devices went from one in four among high school and middle school students to one in three. And so in 2019, 35% of high school students and 35% of middle school students were current users of e-cigarettes. These are among the highest rates among youth in the world, not just in the country, they are the highest in the U.S., but they are among the highest in the world. Thus, the urgency to address tobacco and e-cigarette use is even more marked as we attempt to head off a generational epidemic of nicotine addiction and future health harms. The second general point, I think, has to do with uniformity in definitions across all of the related bills. Legal experts across the U.S. advise us and strongly recommend that in defining e-cigarettes and other electronic smoking devices, we should use definitions that broadly define the products to include current and future devices, not limit the definitions to nicotine-containing products, because there are many products that claim to be nicotine-free on the market, which when tested, have measurable amounts of nicotine. Do not require the products to be made or derived from tobacco, because we are already seeing synthetic e-liquids coming on the market. We need to include and integrate e-cigarettes into existing definitions of tobacco products so that they are considered tobacco products. Do not exempt them from regulations that concern advertising, marketing, and/or warning labels, and explicitly include e-cigarettes and other smoke electronic devices in smoke-free and taxation laws, and do not preempt stronger regulations at the state or local levels. So maybe I'll end with just my comment on the current bill, and this is Bill 186. And for 186, which is relative to updating the use of tobacco fees and penalties to protect youth from the harms of nicotine and tobacco use, this is a bill that we should support. Penalties should be forceful enough to deter noncompliance, and it is good to periodically review and update the fee and penalty schedule. When the monies collected are directed to fund prevention programs and healthcare, the benefits are amplified. So one suggestion would be perhaps to revise a statement in Section 6506. 100% of the funds shall be used by the Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center's Prevention and Training Branch for tobacco and drug compliance monitoring. Perhaps revise that to 100% of the funds shall be used for tobacco compliance monitoring. Other than that, I have no other comments on this bill, and would, and really hope that this bill will pass. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. David, for your testimony and all the work that you've done to curb tobacco use on Guam. Now I'd like to recognize Director Ariola for her testimony.
Thank you, Senators, and thank you for this opportunity to provide testimony on Bill 186-37. My name is Teresa Ariola, the Director of Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center. I did submit written testimony to your office, Senator Perez, and so I hope that all the senators will be able to see that on the floor. But let me just go over my testimony. Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center submits this testimony in favor with recommendations of Bill 186, an act to update the use of tobacco fees and penalties to protect Guam's youth from the harms of nicotine and tobacco use. If written into law, this bill will positively impact ongoing efforts for ensuring maximum compliance for Public Law 34-01, the Youth Protection Act, that limits access to tobacco electronic nicotine delivery systems, or ends, to persons 21 years or older. First, as Director of Guam Behavioral Health, I would like to thank you for recognizing the need to redirect fees received from tobacco retail violations to support tobacco law enforcement and compliance, as well as primary prevention efforts. Our agency, alongside the Department of Rev and Tax, leads the annual SINAR tobacco retail inspection, a mandate from the federal government's Public Law 102-321, or their SINAR, or better known as the SINAR Amendment, which requires states and territories to establish and enforce the minimum legal aids for purchasing and using tobacco products. Without local funding to administer this requirement, Jipwic has to find the means to cover the cost of these activities annually. In fiscal year 2023, the SINAR inspection bill totaled roughly around $76,000 to include personnel salary, stipends, vehicle rental, and supplies. That was almost $77,000 worth of prevention funding that we could not allocate to facilitate other equal important strategies, such as youth alternative programs in the community, social marketing campaigns, or prevention education workshops in schools. For this reason, Jipwic supports this legislation initiative to distribute and deposit all collected fees and penalties to the Department of Rev and Tax, 20% to the Better Public Service Fund, the Department of Public Health and Social Services, 30% to the Bureau of Non-communicable Disease, bless you, and to our agency, Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center, 50% to the Youth Tobacco Education Prevention Fund, which provides a, that will provide a consistent local funding source to support the annual inspection for tobacco retail compliance, as well as prevention and education programs. The annual results of the SINAR inspection mentioned by both yourself and Dr. David informs the Government of Guam of retail compliance and violation rates, which then influences how we can improve our licensing practices and prevention program approach. I'd like to share with you an example that shows the value of compliance inspections in our government function. In 2020, while we were experiencing the global pandemic of COVID, our agencies were not able to conduct our inspections because of the island-wide lockdown. In the following year, Guam retail violation rate went up to 11.9%, almost doubled the average from the prior decade of 6.8%. Aside from the lack of inspections, we also recognized a need for increased merchant education throughout the year. As much as Jipwic attempted these recommendations in 2021 and 2022, we simply could not, with little to no resources available. As appointed administrator of the Youth Tobacco Education Prevention Fund, as cited in Bill 186, we propose to utilize the funds as follows: to cover the cost of a full-time program coordinator to be assigned to the prevention branch; to procure necessary equipment, supplies, and contractual services; to focus, to retail-focused education outreach year-round; and lastly, to hire the necessary staff, procure supplies, to spread the inspection throughout the year. I would like to emphasize, based on research and guidelines published by the Prevention Tobacco Addiction Foundation, the best practice for tobacco retail licensing is to facilitate at least two unannounced inspections of licensees per year. Clearly, our government has been needing to improve our retail inspections. However, we had to push it to the next time or other priorities, as other priority stakes precedents. We need your help to push this through. We are looking, we're losing valuable opportunity to educate and collaborate with our industry stakeholders, not to mention being at the brink of being noncompliant of our federal mandates each year, that our federal prevention funding experiences a cut. A local and consistent source of funding for the tobacco retail inspection is long overdue and much needed. Senators, in line with this topic, I would also like to share with you an emerging concern that could be applied to this bill. Historically, Guam has had low retail violation rate among tobacco retailers, which may explain the decreasing tobacco use among adults and youth in our community. However, in the more recent years, we are experiencing a rapidly increased rate of current e-cigarette uses among our youth, climbing from 26% in 2017, 35% in 2019 among high school students, and 23% and 34% among middle school students. While we do not have representative, while we do not have representative information about where our youth is accessing e-cigarettes, our SINAR inspection that included disposable e-cigarettes this past year has yielded an increase in violations. While they are marketed differently, the fact is that electronic nicotine delivery device systems, most popular known as e-cigarettes, contain similar addictive substances as tobacco. E-cigarettes are also manufactured by the same mother companies of tobacco. Simply put, tobacco and e-cigarettes are products of the same nature and effect. They are addictive. Public Law 34-01 was amended to include e-cigarettes in the regulation that limits sales of such products only to those 21 and over. This law can only be effective of enforced properly and reinforced properly, and the focus of Bill 186, retail inspection for public products, is exactly that. We implore you to include a comprehensive definition of tobacco in this bill, to include all forms of nicotine-containing products, such as, but not limited to, in smoke, chew, liquid, or aerosol form. In conclusion, Jipwic supports Bill 186, as it aims to identify resources to sustain, improve, and expand the retail inspections among Guam tobacco merchants. Given the resources, we are eager to lead the expansion of these inspections and education efforts, as we have been in the past years, alongside our partnering agencies in the Government of Guam, and we feel strongly that we can maximize the benefits of this initiative by including its coverage to all nicotine-containing products, such as e-cigarettes. Thank you for bringing forth this initiative to the Committee for Consideration and to our island community for collective review. Undankulu nasidzuus maasi.
Thank you so much, Director Ariola, for your thoughtfulness and comprehensiveness in your testimony. All right, we'll ask questions hopefully later. All right, next on the list is Fred Nishahara. Do you have testimony, oral testimony to provide? Or, yeah. Okay, so.
Hafa Day, good afternoon, Madam Chair, Senator Barnett, Senator Fisher, Senator Brown. My name is Ike Paredo, I'm the Director for the Customs and Quarantine Agency. I'm here this afternoon. I'm here this afternoon to provide testimony and recommendation in support of Bill 194-37 Ellis, an act to amend section 6209 of Article II, amend 6306 and section 6308 of Article III, amend section 6401 and section 6402 and 6405, all of the Article IV and amendment of 6603 of Article VI, all the chapters of chapter VI, titled 11 Guam Code annotated relative to updating fines and penalties for tobacco and nicotine violations. The importation and exportation of tobacco products between places thus long being highly regulated by all governments, including government of Guam, at either the airport or the seaport, Customs has been at the forefront to ensure the proper application, assessment, and enforcement of the relevant tobacco laws. Tax revenue generated by tobacco is important to our government coffers, which specifically fund health programs related to ill effects of tobacco use and the Youth Tobacco Education and Prevention Fund, to name a few. However, as more regulations are imposed, the instances to circumvent, avoid, and ultimately smuggle tobacco products into Guam exist. In fact, one of the most possible legal commodities smuggled through customs worldwide are tobacco products, all in an effort to avoid payment of taxes and regulations set by governments. Again, we support the initiative of Bill 194 and hope that the Committee accepts the following amendments that will further enhance Customs and Quarantine Agency. These amendments will provide CQA the ability to identify violations committed by persons, owners, and consignees who violate Article VI, Chapter VI, Title 11 of the Guam Code. The recommended language is as follows. For the first recommendation, 6603 penalty, whoever transport or imports into Guam for commercial use in Guam tobacco products in violation of this article shall be penalized as follows. We recommend that the words "delivery" or be replaced with "commercial," as change in language will allow Customs to investigate and gather evidence that the intent to transport tobacco products was in violation of the provisions set forth in Chapter VI of Title 11 Guam Code annotated. It is recommended that the word "be" inserted after "shall" and before "penalized" to emphasize the penalties that will be imposed. Second recommendation, A, in the case of the first violations of person, owner or consignee shall be guilty of a misdemeanor. B, in the case of any subsequent violation, the person, owner, or consignee shall be guilty of a felony. We recommend to amend and include the word "owner" or "consignee" in the existing language of section 6603 A and B, after "person" and before "shall" in both parts, allowing CQA to investigate and determine the responsible party in violation of the act. The third recommendation, C, any individual who imports tobacco products outside the exemption identified in this article shall be imposed a fine of three times the taxable assessment, which shall be determined using the tax rate establishment in section 26603 of Article VI, Chapter 26, Title 11 Guam Code annotated, by the officer of the Customs and Quarantine Agency at the ports of entry. The commodity shall be seized, and the violator of this section shall be fined additionally the same amount as the taxable assessment for the cost of storage, destruction, administrative fees for tobacco, exceeding the exemption pursuant to 9 Guam Code annotated 47.70. Striking the words "additional" three times the value of the current value of the commodity and replacing it with additionally the same amount as the taxable assessment, this will provide a uniform and standard basis for customs officers to determine the additional fine without ambiguity in determining valuation of goods due to price fluctuations and tobacco brand costs. We hope that you consider these recommendations that will aid Customs in applying and enforcing Guam tobacco laws and regulations at our ports of entry. Again, thank you for giving me the opportunity to provide testimony in support of this bill, and I am available to answer questions from the committee members. Thank you.
Sizouz Massey, Director Paredo, for your testimony. If you can provide a copy for us to circulate, I appreciate that. Oh, we have copies, okay. Yeah, if we can circulate those copies, thank you. Okay, next on our list, from the Attorney General's Office, Fred Nishahara. You're recognized.
Madam Chair, Senators, generally, the Attorney General's Office does support Bill But after listening also to Director Teresa Ariola, as well as my friend here, Director Paredo, if the stream of funding and if what we need are boots on the ground, we need a consistent stream of funding, what we are proposing to do through the other bills is increase rates, increase violations, et cetera, that wouldn't be able to sustain the on-the-ground boots, in other words, cost for additional personnel to have two inspections a year as recommended by Guam Behavioral Health, to add the additional custom officers to check cans at the port when they come in, as well as basic travelers coming in and out from different countries that have cigarettes packed in their suitcases. So I've spoken with Attorney General about this. It would reduce regulations and certainly taxing on not only our attorneys, our paralegals, as far as enforcing violations, but a simple fix would be to increase the tax, push those tax increases to Guam Behavioral Health, to Customs and Quarantine, and there you have a steady stream of funding, just as Teresa Ariola had asked for. And so, I know it's unusual, but our office is suffering from a lack of attorneys, a lack of paralegals, and so forth. By adding these additional regulations, and especially in the other bills that we look at, increasing the fines, the chances of businesses going and opposing those fines will end up in a legal or litigation of some type of matter, which basically then makes our office decide what is going to be the priority, which cases are we going to proceed with. Our AG has made a decision that criminal cases will be the top priorities. Other areas, especially administrative areas, may become secondary. So if we're looking, I mean, at the end result, if we're looking and seeing what will occur that occur prevent tobacco, especially youth tobacco, our inspectors at that level, then that is the recommendation that we would be pushing forward. But in general, this particular bill is with regard to reallocating funds to the different agencies, and we're in support of that.
All right, thank you, Assistant or Deputy Attorney General Nishahara, for your testimony. I'd like to now recognize Lilly Vinch, I believe Speaker from the Youth Congress, for her testimony.
Hafare, and thank you for this opportunity. I'm Lilly Vinch. I'm a Guam Youth Congress Representative and serve as the 34th Guam Youth Congress Speaker. I'm also a senior at Guam High School, hoping to give back to our island and our community to push for better change. I've always made it my mission to advocate for the youth of Guam and focus and address the issues and concerns that are plaguing our childhood. Today, I am testifying in support of Bill Number 186-37. This bill, sponsored by Chairperson Perez and Chris Barnett, is a necessary step in the right direction to protect our youth. If passed, this bill will update the use of tobacco fees and penalties to protect us from harms of nicotine and tobacco use. Although e-cigarettes have been around for more than a decade, vaping rates have skyrocketed in these past years, especially among teens. As the bill states, the use of electronic nicotine delivery devices or vaping is highest among Guam youth. My mother, a fourth-grade teacher at Marshall-Sablon Elementary School, has weekly occurrences of her students being sent down to their counselors, their principal's offices, for being caught using these nicotine-delivering devices in the bathrooms or at recess. These students that aren't even able to comprehend chapter books are using these nicotine-delivering devices. Because of these high nicotine levels, e-cigarettes are extremely addictive, and the youth are already more susceptible to this addiction. Nicotine devices are deteriorating our youth's health, the future of Guam. This is a sad reality that we now face, but the first place to end this plague is through education, prevention programs, the available treatment, which this bill supports. Austin Fortuno, our Youth Congress Representative and chairperson for the Committee on Youth Affairs and Education, wishes he could be here today, but shares and states that empowering Guam's youth means safeguarding their health. By supporting these bills, we take a crucial leap towards a brighter tobacco-free and vape-free future for our island's next generation. On behalf of the Youth Congress, I would like to thank the Committee for introducing this legislature, giving this bill a hearing to the public, and allowing this opportunity to express our voice and represent the youth for something that prominently impacts us. Passing this bill will benefit the youth of Guam. Sizouz Massey, thank you for this opportunity.
Sizouz Massey, Speaker Lilly Vinch, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to provide testimony? Okay, Bistra, you can come up to the front. If there's anybody else, you're welcome to come as well. Oh, this is just for Bill 186 at this moment? I'm sorry? Okay, yeah, you're gonna do testimony for everything? Okay, we'll partition it out, that's fine. You can provide it correct at this time.
Hafare, Honorable Senators, my name is Bistra Mendiola. I'm a registered voter in the District of Chalampago and also a small business owner. For the record, I'm the owner of Vape Escape Stores, which provide nicotine delivery devices to our adults, not the youth. I would like to comment on all bills. Thank you for the opportunity to do so. In regards to Bill 187, I'm sorry, 186-37...
Excuse me, sorry, Bistra. If we can maybe just focus on this particular bill for now, my apologies, and then we can move on to the next bill. We're doing it one by one.
Okay, so the first one in discussion was the 186, correct? Okay, I'm sorry about that.
Thank you.
Okay, the tobacco fees and penalties. In regards of this bill, my company remains neutral. I strongly agree with the intent. Unbeknownst to many, the vape store owners, particularly those who are most vocal about those issues, are your first safeguard against youth use because we're adult-only facilities, and we strongly enforce any underage minors coming and try to buy our products. And also, we are regulating the adults who are coming in openly trying to buy. We have a system in place. We ban them, and we have them on the record, and we also share within the industry. So we have a record of a lot of adults that are actually attempting to buy from minors. So again, I want to reiterate that we strongly agree with the intent. However, we feel that the tackling of the monies that are collected is something that we trust the legislation to do so appropriately. I also am aware that there's another bill in the Committee that may want to tackle the same issue. So with that said, we're neutral, but we support the intent. Did you want me to go further for the next bills or no? Okay, fine.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Ms. Mendiola. Okay, so I guess at this point, we're gonna open the floor to questions, but I guess I do have, I guess, questions, starting with Dr. David, and we do appreciate your testimony. In regards to defining, I know this was done federally, where they changed or they included products by regulation. And perhaps the way, you know, our laws, you know, work as we generally introduce bills to change the definition, but perhaps we can put in language to make it more of an ongoing process, hopefully through, and maybe this is a question for also Director Ariola, is this something, as far as, you know, adding products by regulation, is this something Guam Behavioral Health is willing to do to ensure that any current products that are not currently in statute, but also future products?
Thank you, Senator. The key point is the addictive ingredient, which is nicotine. So, you know, it's all packaging, whether it's in a cigarette form, or a vaping device, or liquid drops, or tape, or whatever the tobacco industry become very, very creative in doing in the future. What we want to do is just be very clear that anything with nicotine, that delivers nicotine to a person, be recognized and be fined for youth tobacco. I mean, you know, years ago, nobody thought of a vaping device. It was all just one form of packaging, which is a cigarette stick. Today, there's so many ways in which nicotine is taken in by an individual. We want to make sure, instead of having to come back to the legislature after a creative idea is brought forth by the industry, to keep coming back and adding, to have a language that's more expansive and basically includes every type of device or method of deliverance to a person's body, whether it's in, you know, whatever shape, form, or style, or packaging. That's really what we want to do. We want to limit the fact to keep going back and forth and just recognize that it's nicotine that is the addictive characteristic and the addictive ingredient that we want to regulate and ensure, that it is not used by youth. I'm not a smoker, so it's easy for me to say, but, you know, I just need to recognize the island of Palau. If you're not aware, Palau this year banned e-cigarettes. Bravo to them, exactly, Senator Fisher, because what that means is they're not going to deal with youth. They're going to ensure that there is no vaping, no e-cigarettes, in the island of Palau. That is the purest 100% prevention strategy is to completely eliminate. I understand that's in the books already, and, you know, I understand that there's some efforts to do that movement, and I'm sure businesses will have something to say about that, but the bottom line is Palau has taken those extreme measures to safeguard their kids, because that's how much they value their children's lives. And so, we just want to make sure that whatever language is included is inclusive of any type of packaging, marketing, that nicotine, the addictive characteristic, is inhaled and taken in by an individual.
Thank you, Director Ariola. Dr. David, if you wanted to add to that?
The landscape of tobacco use is constantly evolving, Senator. So when we started out many decades ago, it was cigarettes and chewing tobacco, and then we had this electronic smoking devices, and in fact, they came out 20 years ago in 2003. I was working in China at that time in WHO, and it was started there. Now we have, in addition to these devices, we have heat-not-burn, or heated tobacco products, HTPs, and nicotine pouches are starting to make their appearance in the market. In certain parts of the world, you can have nicotine toothpaste, nicotine water, and other products that have this very addictive substance. I think our legal experts recommend that we have a broad definition that will...
I think our legal experts recommend that we have a broad definition that will be able to cover current and potential or future products. One issue is, while recognizing that the nicotine is the addictive component, one recommendation they make is don't limit your definition to nicotine-containing products, because what has been found in the U.S., in the UK, in Australia, and in other countries, there are products marked as being nicotine-free, but when they were tested in laboratories, they were found to have very high levels of nicotine. In one study, over 90% of products that advertised themselves as nicotine-free had measurable amounts of nicotine. So the recommendation is, don't limit it just to nicotine. There is model language that is available, Senator, and I will share this with your office staff, and certainly legal resources we can tap into in the country to help us in crafting appropriate definitions. Thank you.
Greatly appreciate that. Okay, the questions I have for Director Paredo. Thank you for your testimony today and your presence. I just wanted to ask you if, you know, in your experience with enforcement, what do you see as the biggest problem? You said, I'm probably getting confused with the Nishihara, but what do you see as the gaps, and how can we address those gaps?
I think, from my perspective, Senator, and through my experience, I think enabling legislation that provides penalty for the importation of undeclared cigarettes is one of the best mechanisms to prevent tobacco products from coming to our borders. As I mentioned in my testimony, this is a very profitable market throughout the world. Cigarettes, the smuggling of cigarettes is also identified as one of the biggest concerns at any ports of entry. So my thing is, from my perspective, is establishing penalties that will not only deter, but prevent the importation of imported cigarettes, especially smuggling.
And the language that you provided for the amendments to include owner consignee, are there cases where an individual was not cited for those reasons, because they didn't meet the description that's in law currently?
Based on my experience, what we've been doing at the borders is that when we come across cigarettes that are undeclared, we normally seize those items and turn them over to Revantax. From a passenger standpoint, when a passenger comes into our terminal, there's an exemption for them, and if I believe it's five cartons of cigarettes, anything over five, there's a determination based on regulations on how we deal with that, to impose a fine.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm gonna open up the floor to my colleagues. Senator Barnett, if you have any questions?
Thank you, Senator, Madam Chair. I'd like to thank the panel for coming out. It's very insightful information, this issue. I mean, it's sad to say, we're way behind the curve on this issue, and I know that one of our other colleagues has a bill to tax the e-cigarettes, vapes, and whatever we're calling them. But, you know, Mr. Paredo, I wanted to ask Mr. Director, do we have any idea how much or how many of these devices are being imported into our island, so compared to like the cigarettes, right? So when you have somebody who's bringing in cigarettes, I'm sure you have your process to determine how many cartons, pallets, et cetera. Do we have a system in place to adequately monitor how many of these e-cigarettes, vapes, are coming into the island? Now, you might?
For the cigarettes that are being imported, yes, they are monitored, not only by our agency, but also Revantax. With respect to vapes, I don't have a number for that, because we're not enforcing.
Right. And that's, I think, the struggle that we've had in trying to determine how much revenue we'd raise by taxing the vapes, is, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, we don't have any idea how many vapes are coming into our island through the ports of entry?
I don't have that information at this point in time.
I mean, because you know, if you're doing the math, if we're gonna tax at a certain percentage, then we want to figure out how much revenue it's gonna generate, we're really flying, I mean, in the dark, right? Dr. David, thank you for your very insightful, and also Director Ariola, with some great recommendations that you guys have made there, and also Speaker Vence. I was just at Marshall-Sablon Elementary, and I don't know if that was your mom I talked to, but I did talk to a kindergarten teacher, and she did say that they do catch elementary kids with the vape. And so this crisis, it's obviously very alarming, especially when you see the new data that you have that says 35%, one in three. And so we've seen this drastic increase, and then we have the vape shops saying that they are absolutely not selling any to the youth. So I'm just trying to make sense, I don't know if they're magically appearing, or the parents, obviously, Ms. Mendiola is saying that they busted some parents getting it, but maybe this is a question for Director Ariola, because I went through the SINAR report, but I didn't, I mean, I just got it, but can you explain a little bit more about the violations you had talked about relative to the e-cigarettes and the vape?
I don't have the SINAR report. I think that was put out a couple weeks ago in a press release that I sent out, but, you know, and I believe, like you mentioned, there are some legislations coming down regarding taxing e-cigarettes, and we'll deal with that at the next public hearing. But, you know, the bottom line is, we included this go-around, instead of just cigarettes, we also included e-cigarettes. And so it was through that effort between Guam Behavioral Health, Revantax, and Public Health, that we discovered that there are merchants or retailers who are selling to underage, to children. And so it's not just the vape shops, it's anyone who has a license to sell tobacco products. So we're talking about the mom-and-pop stores, the supermarkets, et cetera. Guam has relatively had a really good rate of compliance in the high 90s, but as e-cigarettes taken off, all it's just, it shifted from smoking cigarettes to vaping, the vaping devices. And we'll talk about that in another public hearing, that's why you see the taxes shift. But the realities are, there are merchants, retailers, who have a license and who are selling. And so I think there is some other bills that I can address, some strategies, and that later on today. But yes, there is an increase. We've tagged on e-cigarettes in this round of inspections, and it's very alarming.
And I'm just gonna read from the report here. It says, there's one section, "Describe any challenges that the state, Guam, faces in complying with the SINAR regulation." And then in the report, it lists here, "Guam Department of Revenue and Taxation reports that tobacco inspections are only conducted with Jibwick'S SINAR program. There are no other grants or resources to support additional inspections or compliance checks." And then it reads further, "The original tobacco retailer's list, recorded and provided by the Department of Revantax Business License Branch, tends to have discrepancies. The list requires intensive data cleaning and review from both agencies to ensure accuracy and completion." So that basically tells me, although we did see an increase in the violations, that perhaps we could have seen more if we were able to adequately look at and have the resources to get out there and conduct the extra checks like you talked about. So that being said, Ms. Ariola, have you guys worked with Revantax to scrub that list?
Always.
Okay.
We're always. And I just want to say that the collaboration between Public Health, Revantax, and Guam Behavioral Health has gotten better and better in the past years. I also, as I mentioned in my testimony, there are no local dollars right now. The single annual SINAR inspection is being funded by Jibwick by using other prevention dollars not specific to a SINAR process, but is allowable. But that also takes away from using that money, from doing what it's in real intention. So having local funding specifically for inspections and for compliance will really help us, so we can use those grant dollars for the true intention of why we wrote the grant.
Thank you, yeah, and it's definitely been frustrating, even prior to gaining a seat during the legislature, I mean, years back, I remember watching the Healthy Future Fund, I mean, just dwindle, and we all know, the reason is because we're not capturing that revenue stream from the e-cigarettes, yeah, and the vapes, and I just think it's the funniest thing that vapes were originally marketed as a smoking cessation device, and now you're just, I mean, you're just vaping. That's it. You didn't quit smoking cigarettes, you just moved over to vaping.
It's a shift.
Yeah.
That's all it is.
Right.
They've dropped the cigarette between the fingers.
Correct.
And they're putting something...
So outside of like the GRT that these businesses are paying, I mean, I shudder to think how much revenue we have lost as a government since 2003, basically, and we have seen the usage of these vapes. I mean, they are popping up, the vape shops are popping up faster than dialysis centers. I mean, and I hate to say that comparison, so, yeah, I'm glad that Senator Perez has included me as a co-sponsor of these measures, because like I said, we're way behind the curve, and these statistics, I mean, as the Chair of Education, when I hear from DOE that they have seized so many vapes, they don't even know how to dispose of the stuff. Like, they're trying to write over to Guam EPA, "How do we dispose of these vapes and the lithium batteries," or whatever is in these devices that pose that threat to the environment, and so that's how massive this problem is. So I thank you again for your insight, and I hope that we can put these recommendations in and get these measures out on the floor and passed in a quick way. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Barnett. Senator Fisher, if you have any questions?
Thank you, Chair. And good afternoon to all the panelists. Thank you very much for being here. I join, my colleague, I worry about the amount of revenue we have lost from under-collecting on these products, but, you know, sorry about the dollars, but I'm worried more about the lives that we have lost than the money. And we lose the lives, of course, to nicotine, which is a highly addictive, highly dangerous substance. I have to confess that I'm a bit of an absolutist on the e-cigarette situation. We need to crush it. It cannot exist. I take my hat off to the people of Palau and to the government of Palau, they have recognized an overriding responsibility that they have to the children of their island, and I hope we soon, very soon, join them in that. Director Ariola, we've been using the phrase SINAR. I didn't know what it was until I just Googled it, and I think that may be true for quite a number of the people on Guam. Could you tell us what SINAR is? S-Y-N-A-R?
I'm not sure what the... Do you know?
SINAR?
It's the name of the person, maybe Dr. David.
Yeah.
The background behind SINAR, but it's the effort of compliance that uses, but it's the name of a person, but I think Dr. David, if you don't mind.
No, ma'am. Dr. David?
It's an initiative, Senator, that started out a couple decades ago, that is also linked to Guam's ability to receive funding for highways and road safety. And it involves the mandatory inspections of merchants and retailers of tobacco products to ensure that sales to minors do not happen.
Okay, is it linked in any way to federal assistance or federal funding?
Yes, it is. In fact, I believe that the ability to receive certain grant funding is linked to compliance with the SINAR inspections. So there is a financial repercussion if we do not comply with the annual inspection.
So it incentivizes compliance and it disincentivizes non-compliance?
Monitoring. It incentivizes monitoring, yes, Senator.
I understand. So it's, I think, it came from something, I believe, called the SINAR amendment, but it, I guess it just applies globally, at least in the United States. Okay, thank you for that. Now, e-cigarettes and combustibles, as we've observed, combustible cigarettes, Pall-mals, Marlboros, whatever, the things you actually light up, they are similar products, in a sense. They are both devices to deliver a highly addictive, highly dangerous drug to the recipient. So in that sense, they are the same. And to you, Director Ariola, are, in your estimation, your objective observation, and I'll throw this to Dr. David as well, are they marketed, combustibles versus e-cigarettes? Are they marketed at different demographic groups?
You're not gonna see the companies, you're not gonna see the companies differentiate. Actually, they just market it very creatively to attract the youth. And so you're gonna see different flavors, different cute devices, and it's all packaging, it's all marketing. But what matters is, doesn't matter whether it's a Senrio cute little thing, or a bling-bling device that you hold towards your mouth, the reality is, is what they're inhaling is the addictive product.
Okay, so...
So they don't, they're not gonna say, "Oh, we're marketing to children," of course not. But it's those subliminal messaging and attractions, characteristics, bling-bling, different characters, colors, that are very, very attractive to the young eye.
Okay, and Senator Barnett just suggested that, is there anything about the flavoring of an e-cigarette versus a combustible that might be more attractive to a child?
Well, just like candy.
I'm sorry?
You know, like candy. They're different flavors, and so the interest of trying the cherry flavor versus, so it's the addictive ingredient flavored, and so, which is even scarier, because it's a masking of the addictive ingredient with the flavoring, like it's candy. Very, very troubling and very, very scary that they're attracting the young, whose mind is so curious on how that's gonna taste, and so they're curious, because they say it's flavorful, or strawberry bubble gum, blueberry flavored, and then before you know it, they're inhaling something addictive, and then they're addicted. And then what do you have? You have one-third of the population in high schoolers getting, I mean...
Yeah, I wish you could stand from the rooftop and shout that. I don't think people appreciate, because perhaps they don't use vaping products, and perhaps they do not have children, and maybe they are not, it's not really confronting them how serious the issue is. Can we all agree that nicotine is a poison?
Yes.
And that appears, we're all agreeing that nicotine is a poison. In one sort of a combustible, let's just take Camel Filterless. As a former smoker, I can tell you, that's a pretty harsh product. Camel filters, they also deliver a poison, that's nicotine, and children, I think, generally speaking, are not very much attracted to the harshness that accompanies the burning of tobacco. But of course... But of course, you know, children are very much attracted to strawberry and fruity pebbles and all of those, all of those, there's something like 14,000 vape flavors out there now, just insane.
Now over 22,000 flavors, Senator.
22,000 vape flavors. And I bet none of them come in harsh. They all come in... Mr. and Senator Barnett, again, you just brought up Joe Camel. I mean, my God. I mean, that was definitely, American Tobacco Company was aimed right at the 12-year-olds. But I guess the bigger part of the question is, as citizens, how do you feel about legalizing a product or permitting the sale of a product that is, at the same time, attractive to children, tastes good, and will kill them? How do you feel about that?
I think what history has taught us, Senator, is that when we do things backwards, we pay the price. Tobacco is a product that is highly engineered. And so the flavors are added in, the menthol, for example, to cut the harshness. The filters are actually engineered so that they can deliver the nicotine more efficiently. So, and I'm not just saying this as conjecture, there are millions of pages of research and tobacco industry documents themselves that have been uncovered that show this. The problem is that with cigarettes, and when we are repeating the path with electronic smoking devices, when cigarettes first came out on the market, they were assumed to be safe until proven otherwise. And it took over a generation and a half for the effects to start to manifest themselves. And now we have lost over a billion lives to tobacco. It is a product that kills half of its users. If there is any other thing on the market today that, when used as intended, kills 50% of the people who use it, it would have been pulled out immediately. But we took the pathway of safe until proven otherwise. And we are taking that same pathway with electronic cigarettes. I'm an environmental medicine doctor, that's my original training. In environmental medicine, we have something called the precautionary principle, which is with environmental exposures, you assume something is dangerous until you prove that it's safe, and you behave accordingly to protect people. We need to take that precautionary principle with these products today as well.
Yes, indeed. As, I believe that written testimony, I think, that we received from Gibwick is that the sales of combustibles are falling, at least in North America. And that's why the American tobacco industry and British tobacco and Lor Lard and all of the awful actors are moving towards vape, because they're trying to develop a new market. And I think that that is, that jibes very well with what is true, is that the big tobacco is moving into Southeast Asia as much as they can to create new markets. That's why if you go to the Philippines, it's cheap to get cigarettes, you know, they're not taxing them. And that's just, you know, the tobacco industry is a very sinister industry, and they are very, very clever. And I'm sure that you all spend most of your time trying to chase after them to see, you just mentioned nicotine water, for God's sakes. It's an awful industry, just awful. It kills people. Speaker Veach, if I may ask you a question, ma'am. You may have a subjective view on this. Why do you think vaping has become so popular among your demographic and younger?
It's clear that the youth aren't the ones buying it. You are either ID'd or stopped at stores, or they have, they're precautionaries that they go to to not sell towards the youth. It's through parents, it's through older siblings, it's through friends that are legally able to buy. And it's the entire marketing of the vape. I mean, you can smell a vape from a mile away, you can smell the blueberry, or the apple pie, or the gummy flavor that resonates. And it's all marketed towards children. The vapes, the packaging, the coloring is ombre, blue, and pink, so it looks cute if you hold it in a pitcher. I mean, it was originally started, the first, like, the vape pen or the Juul, which was one of the most popularized first versions of the vape, was all for marketing. They sent their influencers out onto social media with these cute pods that they could now carry around. It wasn't ever, it started as a cessation device, as you guys said earlier, but now it's completely moved from a different thing. You're now just being addicted again, and the youth are taking it on because it looks cool. They see their older siblings, parents, who are either using it to get off smoking. But then the cute colors, the flavors, the shapes of them, it makes the youth want to try. I mean, we're a curious generation.
Yeah.
But it's the people above us influencing.
Yeah. When you were speaking, it just reminded me of something I think I read this weekend, which is that the human psyche is not fully developed until 18, 21 years old. And then, so now we've got a bunch of 12-year-olds making awful, they're not making decisions, decisions are being made for them by the tobacco companies.
Especially because it's become so normalized.
Yes.
Everyone knows someone who vapes, or knows of someone who vapes. I know multiple, multiple students at school who leave class to vape. It's become extremely normalized.
They leave class to vape?
Mm-hmm. Skip class, leave class, come late to school.
Hmm.
It's sacrificing our generation. It's the next people who are going to lead our island. And if they're all addicted to nicotine and using these vaping devices that are destroying their health, where are we going to go with our future?
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to pass this on, I know the other colleagues are sitting here very patiently. I'm still wrestling with the entire idea, you used the word "normalizing," I'm still wrestling with the entire idea of approaching the vape problem through taxation, because if we approach it through taxation, we're just monetizing it. We're monetizing children's health. We want to make some bucks off your potentially mortal disease. And I just don't know the morality of that, I'm working through that. But at the same time, I do very much appreciate the fact that we're at least trying to do something to suppress the industry, and we're not just ignoring, again, a moral imperative that we have to save children's lives. Thank you all very much for coming, I appreciate it. Thank you. And thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Fisher. Senator Brown, if you have any questions.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I certainly appreciate the testimony and the dialogue with regards to this issue. And unfortunate, I mean, I'm hearing, yes, I think we all concur that it's concerning that we have this issue with our children on Guam and growing abuse of tobacco products and vaping when it's not supposed to be legal to begin with for children and those that are underage. But nevertheless, I guess perhaps we as adults are not setting a good example, because these children obviously are getting these things, they're getting in their hands and they're using them. And you're right, it's kind of normalized. When we were growing up, it was cool to be smoking. Cool was one of the names of the cigarettes. I am a non-smoker, I'm a lifelong non-smoker, I detest cigarette smoke. It's just like I don't drink coffee, I just was born that way, I just don't. Some people at the other end have a need to constantly be doing something. And some of it, it's the motion, it's the activity, it's something to do sometimes with the nervous energy. But what I'm hearing, in spite of all the concerns we have about young people being addicted and using either still tobacco or through vaping, is we really don't have much of a mechanism to address enforcement. And it's sad that we have to do enforcement, because these are the type of things you would expect, would also be taught or addressed at home. And we're seeing more and more as time goes on, that's not the case. It's obviously that as adults, we're setting very, very bad examples. And in spite of the fact, I think we can put more penalty here, and we can try and enforce it, but I'm also hearing that we don't have the mechanism and the funding to enforce it. We had a lot of money last year before the election to pay for an awful lot of things, and now all the things are coming out to the cracks about critical services in this government that we are not able to fund, or do not fund, or simply do not appropriate money to fund. So I'm curious, maybe for those of you certainly from behavioral health, maybe, what is your feedback? What do you think it is that will discourage young people? When I was a student at Barragota Junior High, Chuck, we had, who I got to work with years later, you know, they brought a sample of a lung, and they said, "Well, this is a normal lung infimaaldehyde, and this is a lung of someone who's a lifelong smoker. Which lung do you prefer?" And that was quite an image, because, I mean, the lung was practically almost black. And for me, it was, wow, look at that. And I just, again, I have no interest in smoking, I'm not drawn to it. But as a young person, seeing that kind of awareness, it was kind of, oh, well, I don't want that lung at that age. But what type of outreach programs are we doing? Because obviously, if it's not happening in the home, or the home may be encouraging it, if we have parents that are, or other adults in the, you know, within the proximity in the home of that child that is smoking, then it is normal. And that's concerning. I mean, we have such a high rate of either, you know, smoking, and now smoking is not as cool as cigarettes, it's more cool to vape, because that's a cool thing to do. What do we do to address that? And how do we get out to these young people? Because the consequences of ill health eventually, we're hearing a lot of it, you know, we're hearing with the different types of cancers that we're getting, and the amount of our people that are either suffering and live with it, and then those that actually, you know, are dying from it. But what can we do? And what can we do from a government end on something that really you think within a home environment and family environment is something that should be addressed? And are we allowing it? Are we, as parents or adults, allowing this type of behavior among our children? Are we acquiescing to it? Because we're doing it ourselves.
Thank you, Senator Brown. If I can just address a few of your points. There is data showing that the scare tactic approach to children don't work, to youth do not work. You asked the question, what will work? And it's really about education, teaching, talking to them about how destructive it is to their health. And so, prevention, education, outreach, constant outreach, constant talking. This generation is a generation that wants to be engaged, and they don't have a problem talking to adults. But one of the things that we would like is more youth people. I called the Speaker of Youth Congress yesterday morning, and I said, "Are you aware of this bill? Nothing is more impacting than hearing from the youth." And so as much as us adults at Guam Behavioral Health and a lot of outreach folks in the community are constantly trying to educate youth, it's so much more effective peer-to-peer. Persons of your age, leaders in the community, like Youth Congress, talking to their peers about the health impact. And they want to be the world changers, but you can't be the world changers if you're not around because you're dying from lung cancer or heart disease because of the implications that smoking or taking in nicotine does to you. So to answer your question, much more education. You referenced, and unfortunately, I'm very much like you, I don't smoke and I don't drink coffee. I don't need it. But it is unfortunate that we could conclude that youth who don't have jobs are obtaining money to purchase or getting it from their immediate environment. I mean, there is data that shows that a household that smokes, the likelihood is more people or more youth in that household will be smokers in the future. So as you mentioned, are adults not being the best examples? Probably. I mean, that's the likelihood. But kids do not have income, so they had to get the money to purchase the device or to purchase their bad habits from somewhere. And we can only assume that they're getting it from their homes. How? It could be how curious kids started cigarettes decades ago, seeing a pack of cigarettes on the coffee table. Curiosity. Starts with curiosity a summer, because they're not doing anything, and then led to addiction. And so they're getting their money from somewhere to purchase the device, to purchase their habit. And so there is also data that the higher the cost of these devices, cigarettes, e-cigarettes, nicotine products, and it starts impacting their pocketbooks, then people will think twice whether to purchase it. As you know, some of the highest sales, New York, I don't even know how much it is today, but I heard $15, $20 a pack, people are thinking, what is this? Yeah. People are thinking twice as much, twice before actually spending that money to buy their pack of cigarettes or their e-cigarettes. So, yes, it is unfortunate, I agree with you, that they're getting the example somewhere.
Well, I think that's a challenge for government, because everyone likes to think the government is going to fix everything. And there's some things we can't fix from a policy standpoint. I mean, we can try to the best of our ability, we can put these restrictions, we can increase the penalties, but the fact that this is a growing issue of concern, and that's why even the issue with marijuana, I don't smoke, obviously, so I have no interest in marijuana, but, you know, the legislature allowed it, they made it legal. We're still trying to figure out how to test it years later. And I think that's the challenge for the future, because when Chuck Rossumo showed me a black lung, it scared me, you know, and I was, what, 12, 12 years old? I don't know if public health still does that, I don't know if they do their outreach with regards to discouraging smoking. But I wanted to ask you, Speaker of Youth Congress, I was sitting in your chair, gosh, 39 years ago, so I'm way past the age of youth. But how do you think, from your standpoint, if these young people don't want to listen to adults, what makes you think they're going to listen to fellow, you know, their own contemporaries with regards to being discouraging, you know, to discourage them to not to smoke? And, because when you're young, you're invincible, you don't think about, oh my goodness, years from now, I'm going to, you know, I'm going to have a hard time breathing. Nobody, nobody at a young age thinks of that, where everything's ahead of us. So how do you think you guys can assist among your own contemporaries in getting awareness out there when this is such an in thing to do? You know, the smoking and being cool and, you know, having that whole image, being in the in-group? I'd like your feedback on that.
When you mentioned the act of you seeing the black lung, the demonstration as a kid, I had the same thing. My mother, she worked, and at one of the places that she used to teach exercise classes, they had displays of what your lungs would look like if you smoke. And you were, you're completely correct, it was black. I remember looking at that as a kid and thinking the same thing, I'm never going to do that. Like, why would I ever smoke a cigarette? But now, it's become something that is not just cigarettes anymore, the nasty smell, the nasty taste that's associated with that. It's the sweetness, the colorfulness. And if we're not going to listen to those above us, like parents, or officials, or rules, then who are we going to listen to? And I think it's completely true that vaping has been pressured by peer pressure to begin with. You see a friend doing it, so you do it, or you see a friend trying it, so you want to try it as well. And I think as that promotes it, there's also the opposite side that we can do where it does not promote, where peers can start talking about, I mean, Guam Youth Congress, we have introduced legislation for vaping excise tax. And that's one way to put that word out there, that we are not, we're not standing for that as youth. And that the future of our island is going to be vape and tobacco and nicotine-free. So I think seeing the youth be proactive in these stances against vaping is where we're going to start, because there's no other way to do it.
Is there other things that can be done? I mean, to expand, because in reading the information, I appreciate the statistics here in this survey, but, I mean, as mentioned earlier, it shows that because we have a low, a higher low-income population here, that we're more inclined to want to smoke or to vape, which is really concerning, because, you know, how do you work your way out of that? How do you? And then what's the connection? Why, I mean, I have no interest in it, so it doesn't appeal to me, but why would it appeal to younger people in households that are not, as I mentioned, the higher the income, the less likely people are to smoke? Maybe, Dr. David, in your extensive background, you can give us some insight. What's the connection?
And there is a connection, Senator. But first of all, thank you for speaking up and sharing the fact that you are a lifelong tobacco-free role model. It's very important, I think, for societies to have people in high positions to look up to. up to who model the tobacco-free, e-cigarette-free, drug-free lifestyle. So thank you for that. They're all connected. There is something in public health that we call the social determinants of health. And they talk about how certain things will put you at higher risk, and one of them is low socioeconomic status. And a few years ago, we did a study here in Guam, in fact, and I see my colleague Angie Momert, we, we did that study on tobacco advertising at point-of-sale, and we went through all the villages in Guam with young researchers who were leading the project. And what we found is in the villages that had the lowest average incomes, the density of tobacco advertising was highest. And so, in fact, what we can see from a review of the tobacco industry documents is there is sometimes intentional targeting of poorer households, poorer villages, for, for advertising, which increases the risk of, of use. And I think we will see this also with e-cigarettes and other smoking devices. You, you asked about families. Families are a very important stakeholder in prevention, but what families do never happens outside of a vacuum. And so, it's so important, policies are so important, because they create the environment that will either promote a tobacco-free, e-cigarette-free lifestyle, or one that normalizes e-cigarettes and smoking. And that is why this law and the other bills that are being proposed, as well as taxes, are so critical to promoting healthier families in Guam. Because people look to the policy environment, the policy environment actually shapes family and individual behavior. And, and we know this from our own data. Whenever we saw drops in youth tobacco use, those were following years when we passed good legislation, when we raised the tobacco taxes, when we passed the Natasha Act to make public places smoke-free. Education in a vacuum is ineffective. Education has to happen in a, in an atmosphere, in an environment that promotes the education messages that we are making. And that is why sometimes helping adult vapors and, and e-cigarette users and smokers to quit is the best prevention strategy for young people. When they don't see older people using these devices and products, it denormalizes their use. And I think that is the greatest contribution that our policies can make, is to create that environment that promotes something that would create many more people like yourself who are lifelong, non, you know, who are lifelong tobacco-free, e-cigarette-free, healthy adults.
Well, I'm hoping as time goes on, I remember being on a plane where you had the smoking and non-smoking section, which was pointless.
Yes.
You know, we're all breathing the same air, you know, it just didn't matter what, where you sat, so. I did want to ask Beaster Mendiola, you mentioned, of course, I'm sure at your point-of-sale, you have your procedures in place to make sure that underage people do not come in. Maybe you can elaborate on that. And I understand, once you sell it to an adult, that's really out of your hands where it goes from there, but can you let us know what your process is? And I'm sure you probably have some that probably try and sneak in and
Oh, yes, we have.
And act like they're older than twenty-one.
Yeah, actually, we had instances where the parents or the grandparents come into the store and bring them and directly ask, what do you want? And we're like, wait a minute, how old are you? Oh, it's not twenty-one years old yet. Well, I'm sorry, ma'am or sir, we cannot serve you, you need to leave immediately. Currently, we have much stringent policies, because we've learned over the years what the tactics were. So, we, just as an example, we did see an increase of people kind of video chatting with other people. So we prohibited all video chatting and picture-taking in our stores, because we know what that, that is for, basically, someone who's trying to buy a particular product that it's not supposed to, and the adults will facilitate that use. So we, we gradually increased the stringency, but today, and unfortunately, our staff gets it from the madamcus every time, you know, I'm gray-haired, why are you carding me? I'm sorry, sir, we just have to, we, we want to be fair to everybody across the board, so we will card you no matter how old you are. Currently, the federal standard says if you look older than twenty-seven, you don't need to card, however, we card everyone. So, we don't need the big government to come in and regulate us, because we also believe the responsibility, and as I said in the beginning, we are the first safeguards to youth use, because we are, unlike mom-and-pop stores, and let me tell you this much, unlike, unlike mom-and-pop stores, no kid is allowed to enter our stores. And what Ms. David is talking about, I've seen that study and I've seen all the posters, and I'm pretty sure every time you go around in the villages and you'll see all the big tobacco and alcohol, unfortunately, big advertisement and posters there, yes, I agree with them. Marketing, when it's in front of your face, that gives you that constant expression, impression. So, once you see it more than twelve times, guess what, you're more inclined to use it. And I, I agree that we need to stop this. There are some legal and possibly constitutional challenges to, to this type of restriction. I, I did a little bit of research, and I'm here as your friend to, to let you know about it when the, the time comes. But I also agree that we need to stop this. When, when we are talking about the two different categories of stores, mom-and-pop or a gas station, for example, you see that advertisement everywhere, on the window, behind the window, behind the counter, above the counter, sometimes even right next to the candy. I oppose this type of POS display. When you go to a strictly adult vape shop, the windows are black, all you see is just the business name, that's it. And we currently installed about four-and-a-half, five-foot sign on the, on the door, so there is no way you can miss it, which says twenty-one and on, twenty-one and over only. So that, those are the things that we're trying to do, because this is the responsible thing to do. If, if you ask me, take out the ends out of mom-and-pop and a gas station, put it in, like in some jurisdictions in the U.S., in strictly adult facilities that sell alcohol, tobacco, cigarettes, you know, there are specialty stores that do that. But we cannot regulate what the kids see or don't see when the kid, the children go to mom-and-pop store or the gas station. They eventually will see the nicely labeled bottle of alcohol that looks like a, a tea, but it's a beer, and has the same labeling and, and, you know, there are instances when I've seen children grab it without knowing that that's alcohol. Of course, you're gonna see also the, the, either the cigarette or the snus or, or the chewing tobacco, which, which is there, of course, you're gonna see it. If we really want to be a complete nicotine or prohibitionist society, we just need to completely remove it out of sight. And all, if, if, if comes to policy. But you're right, there are certain things that the government can and cannot do, and that is what happens within the home. That is, that is something that no government can do that for you, unless you propose some penalties when it comes to adult facilitation, even if it happens at home. And we've worked with your colleagues, we've met with quite a few of your colleagues, and we discussed exactly that, because when we leave something to a simple assumption that the parent would take care of without an actual stringent penalty, of course, there's gonna be violations, of course, it's gonna be normalization, of course, it's gonna be a violation, of course, there is gonna be even criminal activity, correct? But when it comes to stringent penalties for even just possession, because currently some of the bills set possession, but there's no actual meat behind it, how do we target possession? Because currently, there are stringent laws about alcohol use and cannabis use. Actually, if, if you're caught with cannabis, you, you are at least fined a hundred dollars, even if you're minor. What is the penalty for tobacco or a tobacco cigarette or even electronic nicotine ends use? If you're caught with it? Nothing. You just, you just need to sign up for a tobacco intervention program. That's it. So yes, we, there, there are things we can do, and us as an industry, we, we've evolved enough to provide that stringent, but yet again, once that product exits the store, there's nothing more I can do. You're correct about that. And actually, when it comes to the Sina report, is, is there a way for us to see who the actual violators are? I want to see them too. I actually was reading the commentary on the KOM Instagram page when, when they reported, and a lot of the people said, list the stores, tell us who they are, I want to know as well. If I can comply with the law, why can't they? They should be publicly shamed for that, shame on them.
Well, thank you, I appreciate, appreciate your comments and all of you for providing your input. It's a challenging issue, but we have to start somewhere. So thank you, thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Brown. So we do have one more that came to testify. Mr. Mendiola, you're welcome to provide testimony at this time for Bill 186.
Good afternoon, Senators, Senator Brown, Senator Perez. Pleased to be here and testify personally before the legislature. I thought we were just specifically talking about 186, but it seemed like it just went into
Yeah, that's my intent, if you can stick to 186 at this time. But, but when we have questions, it does kind of
Okay. Before I get into 186, first and foremost, just for the record, you know, when these, all these statements come out, and I, I'm, I'm a research geek, okay? I enjoy reading, I enjoy hard issues and topics, and it's fun, it's brain food for me, and I enjoy it. And I can't help but overhear some of the misinformation, and I'm actually astonished sometimes. But, you know, then again, I worked in the government of Guam before, and I saw a lot of ignorant things being done with lack of information and research. So, you know, I, I think people should give it a go, use your brain and start researching, because spewing out information and data like that without substantiating it is pretty reckless and endangering. To most part, people's health as well. I believe the U.S. Surgeon General today had mentioned that on misinformation with respect to COVID. And misinformation is a very troublesome problem with respect to public health. With respect to 18637, I'm in support in part and opposed in part. Supporting the Tobacco Control Act, totally agree that no one should, no minor should be having any of those type of products. The data, though, it can be viewed incorrectly. From what I've read, youth tobacco surveys have actually been very, very vague, and then encapsulate other types of products to conclude vape. Not too many people know what that is. I didn't know what that was. So I started, started reading and researching, and I found out what it was. And apparently, it's this, this device that anyone can actually insert content into it, anything. So the idea of a vape being nicotine is not true, and it's not exclusively nicotine. There's cannabis out there. We've seen the last two incidents with respect to Barragata, that would be my former school, Antolam Middle School, and then Tezenheim. The content was later determined, but the immediate response was, it's a vape. And the automatic synonymous term with vape is, that's a nicotine device. So there's errors in the youth tobacco surveys that are being submitted. It does not contain and isolate a particular, particular product, rather, it includes everything from like hookah and cigars, and, and so that right then and of itself is information that in a scientific degree of analysis would be data that is inaccurate and does not represent the, the scope of the vape and its content. The, so that's, that's my opposition in part, and, and then I'm just, I'm just gonna leave it at that, and then I'll move on to the next bills, if you don't mind.
Okay. Just for clarification, Mr. Mendiola, so the part that you're opposing is the part in the legislative intent?
Yeah, only as to the data, as to the, the representation with respect to the, what's that one? Sorry, hold on, one second. The State Epidemiological Outcomes Work Group study data. So, that's, that's one of the things where they said, oh, it's going down, tobacco's going down, and then, you know, there's, there's a shift, there's a paradigm shift there that's going on, which is why smoking traditional tobacco is going down, because there's an increase in a vape product, but the vape product is being confused with other than nicotine devices, nicotine content. And you're, you're, just with the past incidents with Antolam Middle School and Tezenheim High School, that's representative of what I'm saying. That's where I'm coming from.
Okay, all right, thank you. Just one more question before Director Ariola goes away. I just wanted to ask you, you know, in your, we didn't get a fiscal note, really, to show the cost. And do you have, you know, now that we're coming upon the budget, do you have like an estimate of what is needed to, you know, support this program? Because you're saying that you're taking it from other parts of your budget.
Well, I think in our written testimony, we gave a ballpark of how much federal dollars we use, so if we can just get that support in local dollars, that's a start.
Okay, and if you can include that in your budget, so that, you know, we did try to do an amendment after the fact, but it's much more powerful if it could be inserted into the budget beforehand. So that's my recommendation to you. And, you know, and looking at the Epi profile, so, you know, tobacco's just one part of it, right? There's other, there's alcohol, there's suicide rates, and, you know, some of the things that I'm, that I've been reading is that use at a young age, nicotine use at a young age can also, there's a correlation with depression too as well. And so, I think it's, you know, as an agency, this, you have a lot of power to make transitions or transformations in the type of programming. I do regret that we do not have, do not have Department of Education here, which is, which is a big partner in this, and I think it's really critical to, to strengthen those, those collaborations to ensure that we have a robust prevention program. I think prevention is really the key to all of this, if we can stop it before it starts. Just like what Lily Vinch was saying, it's, you know, there's evidence that shows that when youth use nicotine, it's very different from adults in, as far as their response to it, and their overcoming addiction is much more difficult than, than for adults. That's what some of the evidence shows. And so, whatever we can do to, you know, perhaps substitute this use, so my belief is that there has to be a way to promote mental wellness. You know, I've heard about emotional intelligence, coping mechanisms, you know, peer counseling, you said, so I think these are all important types of programs that can help with the prevention. In addition to highlighting the necessity to reduce access to nicotine amongst minors. Again, I do, I agree with you in regards to that it has to be a comprehensive approach. And we need to look, this is just one, one measure of many measures, you know, this is not gonna be solved with this one bill, but it is one, one piece.
Thank you, Senator, and my apologies, I think I sent a note up that I need to go to at 3:30. But I do, I have Sarah Harrow, who is the acting supervisor for prevention here, and she is more than capable, I sent you the testimony, written testimony, she can deliver it orally if you'd like, and she's also here on behalf of the department.
Okay, great, thank you so much, Director. Thank you for being here. I have a question for Assistant Attorney General Nishihara. So in your testimony, you said the way to go is taxation, and I know the bill's coming up later, but is there a level, that's a deterrent level, that you think would not necessarily get?
So I can speak with regard to cigarettes. I've been involved with the Master Settlement Agreement more than two decades at this point. We know the breaking point is that most cigarette users will buy one pack per, as opposed to a carton at a time. Our cigarette price went from two thousand and two, being about fifteen cents a pack, whereas today we are at four dollars a pack. What I can confidently say is that if we increase cigarettes by a dollar a pack, this is just cigarettes, you will have a slight decrease in tax and then it'll go up. But more important, because what I've heard from the directors and other enforcement, including Customs, that they need more people on the ground to do these inspections as being the deterrent for people smuggling in either cigarettes or vapes. If you're looking for a funding stream, as opposed to just increasing, especially violations, right? If you have an increase in violations, great, but it won't be a steady stream of funds. If you have an increase in violations, great, but it won't be a steady stream of income. So by increasing the taxes, you will have, like I said, a slight decrease, but then you can arrange that increase to go to public health, you can, or, I'm sorry, behavioral health. You can arrange for that amount, that stream, that, that stream of funding to go to Customs and Quarantine, where they have enforcement people doing inspections, what's coming in, including the airport? Including the airport. So airport, the port, mail, cargo, thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. I do want to thank...
And one other thing, you know, Senator, I'm sorry to, the other thing is, that's probably the easiest mechanism to put in place because we've taken a look at the other bills that are required. So in addition to violations and costs that's gone up, one of the things that vendors would have to do is go through a education process developed by either public health or behavioral health, which is going to require additional people. So if you're asking for these programs to be in place without a dedicated funding source, you're going to stretch their resources even thinner. So whereas they would be out at the port doing investigations, for example, they're going to be in a classroom with vendors, not, not the public. They're going to be educating businesspeople about laws. For me, it should be the businesspeople's duty to know the laws, not us to teach them. So that's, that, that's why when I spoke with A.G. Moylan, he was like, if you want to reduce bureaucracy, for, for lack of better words, then just increase the taxes. The mechanisms are in place, and dedicate that stream, like I said, to the agencies who need it.
Okay, appreciate that. We do have another public hearing regarding that bill. All right, so I just want to thank all of the community that has come out here today to provide their testimony, and I look forward to my colleagues' support in updating our tobacco control laws to increase capacity in protecting our youth from the harms of tobacco nicotine consumption. And so now we're going to move on to the next item of the agenda, which is Bill 187-37. And I'll just provide some quick remarks. Bill 18737 aims to prohibit the sale of tobacco nicotine products defined in 11 GCA Chapter 6 through vending machines. In June 2009, the Family Smoking Prevention Tobacco Control Act was signed into law, which bans the sale of tobacco products through vending machines except for adult-only facilities. In 2016, the Federal Food and Drug Administration, in its final rule, deemed electronic nicotine delivery systems, or ENs, as products meeting the statutory definition of a tobacco product to be subject to the Federal Food, Drug, and Cosmetic Act, as amended by the Family Smoking Prevention and Tobacco Control Act, thus banning the sale of electronic nicotine delivery systems through vending machines by regulation. The importance of Bill 187 is that it is a proactive measure by ensuring a local ban on the sale of tobacco nicotine products through vending machines and thus removing a potential loophole of easy access to tobacco and nicotine products, although the last tobacco vending machine license expired in June of 2018, and no new ones have been issued since. As you know, the 2021 Epi Profile has alarming findings, but as we learned here today, it is much more alarming with roughly a third of our youth in high school and middle school are users of nicotine products, and specifically electronic devices. What's even more alarming is that the age of initiation, nearly one in five of Guam high school students tried cigarette smoking for the first time before the age of 13 years. 11% of middle school students tried cigarette smoking before the age of 11. Males were more likely than females to start tobacco use, and this is from the 2019 data that was published in 2021. Further, in 2017, Guam conducted the Global Youth Tobacco Survey to determine youth's exposure to secondhand smoke, pro- and anti-tobacco messaging, access and availability of tobacco products, and knowledge and attitude about tobacco use. About 39% of students were exposed to tobacco smoke at home. 47 were exposed to enclosed public places. Less than one in five ever received help or advice from professionals are programmed to stop smoking. 22 of the current cigarette smokers bought cigarettes from a store, shop, gas, gas station, flea market, or night market. And then it goes on, and which we will discuss in further bills. What these data point to is that there are policy gaps in need of tobacco control legislation. I want to thank my co-sponsor, Senator Chris Barnett, for recognizing the importance of addressing this epidemic and to bring more attention and resources and support from our community to stem this epidemic. And I look forward to the testimony from the public here today. Currently, we have, I think Dr. Ned David stepped out, but I believe she left her written testimony. We have also Fred Nishihara. You're recognized. Okay, so he defers to Director Paredo. I believe he, his testimony was already given, so it covers everything.
That's very fine. Our office, Attorney General's Office, supports the elimination of vending machines for the sale of tobacco or related nicotine delivery devices. Thank you very much.
Right, thank you. And then, I'm sorry, I did skip over, my apologies, Guam Behavioral Health. Sarah Harrow, on behalf of the Director, you're recognized.
Thank you, Senator. I would like to read the statement for Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center on behalf of our Director, Theresa Ariola, if we have time.
Oh, absolutely. So you would like to provide your own testimony?
Yes, on behalf of the department and our Director.
Okay, yes, please proceed.
Thank you, Senator. But as an offhand, Senator Perez and committee members who are here today, the Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center, Jipwic, submits this testimony in favor with recommendations of Bill 187-37, an act to prohibit the sales of tobacco, nicotine products, and vape products through vending machines in Guam. If enacted to law, this bill will align Guam's local policies with the federal regulations set forth in H.R. 1256 or the Family Smoking Prevention and Tobacco Control Act. On behalf of Jipwic, thank you for recognizing the need to revisit the outdated permission to retail nicotine products through vending machines in our island. While there are none currently registered based on the licensure listing Jipwic received from Department of Revenue and Taxation, codifying this prohibition into law not only aligns our local policies with federal regulations, but it also creates safeguards in our community that control youth's access to these highly addictive and carcinogenic products. Other than including or excluding vending machines, I would like to also share these best practices for retail licensing that according to the Preventing Tobacco Addiction Foundation will more likely reduce youth usage and foster health equity in our community. Retail licensing is a vital regulatory tool that enables states and jurisdictions like Guam to monitor sales of nicotine products, fund compliance efforts, and create effective penalty and suspension structures for repeat violations. While Guam's tobacco retail licensing law establishes a list of all retailers of nicotine products in our island that Jipwic monitors alongside DRT through the Sinar inspection, it fails to achieve the following important functions. First, it does not include a comprehensive definition of nicotine products, as mentioned earlier, that include cigarettes, cigars, smokeless tobacco, pipes, rolling papers, electronic nicotine delivery devices, related liquids, and other related devices written to capture all known and future products. Second, it does not set an annual license fee that is to be periodically adjusted adequate to cover licensed administration, education, or training and enforcement. Please note that an annual fee of lower than $300 is generally inadequate, and many jurisdictions and states have fees that have much higher amount. Third, it does not require that all retailers train their employees who will be allowed to handle these products as a condition of receiving or renewing a license. And lastly, it does not direct licensing and violation fees received to support enforcement, inspection of retailer compliance, and merchant education strategies. To reiterate, Jipwic alongside our partners at DRT leads the annual Sinar tobacco retailer inspection as mandated by federal funds from SAMSA. Without local funding to administer this requirement, Jipwic has had to find means to cover the cost of these activities, which at this time is only facilitated once a year. According to guidelines published by the Preventing Tobacco Addiction Foundation, the best practice in enforcing such retailer licensing program is to require two unannounced inspections per year for each retail license. Jipwic intends to facilitate programs and initiatives that are likely to make an impact. But we recognize, while we recognize that two inspections are more effective and that merchant education strategies will increase the likelihood of vendor compliance, there's no appropriated funds, and so we are not able to initiate or sustain these activities. Aside from prohibiting the sale of nicotine products through vending machines, I, Director Ariola, implore that you consider the updates mentioned above to Bill 187-37 to assist in the prevention work we facilitate at Jipwic. Together, we can reduce our island's youth's use of nicotine products, tobacco, chewing tobacco, electronic cigarettes, or any other novel products that the tobacco industry may introduce in the future. Thank you again for bringing forth this initiative to the Committee for Considerations or Island Community for Collective Review.
Thank you so much, Ms. Harrow, for providing the testimony. And next, we have, I believe, is there anybody else who would like to provide testimony on Bill 187? Oh, sorry. Yes, you may proceed, Bistra.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On Bill 187-37, I rise in support, and I just wanted to expand a little bit more on the topic of discussion, which is preventing the youth use, since this is the legislative intent. I was quite surprised to hear earlier the representative from Guam Behavioral Wellness Center that we don't know where our youth is getting it from, while at the same time, I just read a study provided by the Guam, the University of Guam. It just came out maybe about a month ago. They modeled it after Hawaii's study, so they asked the same type of scenario questions our youth, and they found out that the largest access is outside of the retail point. It's actually at home, and the higher percentage of kids got it from someone at school who got it from someone at home. So I do support any measure that comes into tackling that youth use, but I also want to point out that some of the factual representations that are trying to be presented in front of you are actually very misleading, and I will be addressing each and everyone. Because I went through the whole process of listening, what everyone had to say about our industry, and I just need to chime in here and say something about it because you guys also need to be informed. As Janice Mendiola earlier mentioned, being well-informed is critical to creating a legislative effort that is not only fair to all society members, but also is based on facts and science. And what I heard so far was beating the industry that actually was created to battle big tobacco. And the fact is that the people who actually started using electronic nicotine devices wanted to quit tobacco. And according to the Surgeon General report, nicotine addiction, which was originally created by tobacco smoking, is a lifelong addiction. So to answer the question that probably most of you had, how come a lot of people are switching from tobacco cigarette to electronic nicotine ENs devices? Well, the number will show you, just a couple of years ago, adults of legal age were roughly 11.1% who were users of ENs. Today, they're about 12.1. But if you see the smoking rate decline, it only gives you the idea that it's almost down to the T, the percentage of decline in smoking rate, went into the ENs. Because ENs is, and always has been, a product designed and invented and intended to help adult, current or former smokers shift away from the deadly cigarette stick. Let's just be clear about that. And when we have public health bodies that are coming in here and saying nicotine kills, nicotine is poison, did you know that there is a study that was done not so long ago that actually presented a very interesting fact? 80.5% of U.S. doctors and 90% of Chinese doctors believe that nicotine directly contributes to cancer and disease. Of course not, and we're not going to hear it from neither Dr. David nor from public health. And this is a very erroneous statement to make, and let me show you what I mean.
Ms. Mendiola, if we can stick to the merits of the bill?
Well, yes, Madam Chair, but unfortunately, everything that we've heard so far and everything that we'll hear so far is directly contributed to some, something that I've heard enough. And although efforts, I support the efforts about the youth use, I cannot stand simply and continuously allow misinformation to be presented in front of you because, as I said, there are more tobacco prohibitionists out there that actually understand what tobacco replacement product therapies are. And if you allow me, let me just remind again everyone, and for the record, the FDA and the CDC have funded numerous studies of the benefits of electronic nicotine delivery devices for adult use, I'm not saying for youth, for adult use. And when we continuously stand in front of different political leaders and say ban this or restrict this, we constantly forget that this is a product that helps adults. Do we need to kill grandma? Do we need to kill uncle because it's a quit or die approach by the government? As I said, it's a well-known lifelong addiction, and when we restrict access to something that is intended and is supported by science and the FDA and the CDC know it, let, let me just say what the CDC says. E-cigarette exposed user, user to fewer harmful chemicals than burned cigarettes. True. And have the potential benefit to adult smokers if used as a complete substitute to regular, regular cigarettes. Unfortunately, you guys are not hearing this stance. All I keep hearing left and right, quite frankly, I'm tired of it. We need to present the facts as they are, and you also need to be well-informed about what the facts are. Yes, nicotine, tobacco, alcohol, cannabis has to be restricted for youth. And as Ms. Brown said earlier, there are certain things we can and cannot do, but also we must not forget that we need to create a very fair and square legislation that treats all society members equally, because there is this one thing, equal protection under the law.
Okay, you know, this, yeah, thank you. All right, so is there any other testimony? Okay, so at this point... All right, so we do have one other testimony from Cynthia Al from the American Cancer Society Hawaii Chapter. If we can put her up on the screen.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Senator Perez, Chair, and Senate Committee Members, thank you for the opportunity to support Bill 18737. I'm Cynthia Al from the American Cancer Society, Cancer Action Network, and we commend Guam's legislature for continually creating safeguards for Guam's youth and putting an end to vending machine sales of all tobacco products, including electronic smoking devices throughout Guam. Lung cancer is the cause of about 31% of cancer deaths in males and about 23% of cancer deaths in females in Guam. Cancer mortality data highlights the critical importance of further reducing tobacco use in Guam. In order to effectively reduce tobacco use, it is important to understand the impact of the retail availability of tobacco products. The presence of tobacco retailers, including vending machines, can undermine a community's ability to establish tobacco-free social norms by increasing accessibility to tobacco products, including e-cigarettes, and increasing exposure to tobacco industry point-of-sale advertising, marketing, and promotions. Proximity to tobacco products is associated with higher smoking rates and can reduce the success of those trying to quit. Over 90% of all tobacco companies' marketing budget is spent at the point-of-sale, and for good reason, as a presence of point-of-sale advertising increases the risk of youth taking up tobacco, encourages impulse purchases of tobacco products, cures cravings, and undermines quit attempts. Implementing comprehensive policies and best practices, such as removing easily accessible points of sale, such as vending machines for tobacco products, will reduce tobacco use in Guam. I just, I didn't have an opportunity to comment on the last bill, on the definitions, but ACS CAN can help with model definition for tobacco products and electronic smoking devices that can help, that we can provide to your committee. But I would like to say, in response to some of the testifiers' comments about this issue being a nicotine issue, if anything that you put into your lungs, that you inhale into your lungs that isn't supposed to be inhaled, is harmful to you, regardless if it has nicotine or not. And according to the definition that is model definition for tobacco product, I could provide that definition to you now. provide that definition to now, how we see as model definition of tobacco product, is any product containing, made of, or derived from tobacco or nicotine that is intended for human consumption or is likely to be consumed, whether inhaled, absorbed, or ingested by any other means, including but not limited to cigarette, a cigar, pipe tobacco, chewing tobacco, snuff or snus, any electronic smoking device, and any substance that may be aerosolized or vaporized by such device, whether or not the substance contains nicotine or any component, part, or accessory of one of, or whether or not any of these contains tobacco or nicotine, including but not limited to filters, rolling papers, blunt, or hemp, wraps, hookahs, mouthpieces, and pipes. Tobacco product does not mean drugs, devices, or combination products authorized for sale by the U.S. Food and Drug Administration, as those are defined in the Federal Food, Drug, and Cosmetic Act. So regardless if it has nicotine or not, anything that is inhaled into your lungs is considered harmful and will be harmful to your health and affect your health and health outcomes. I also wanted to address the comment on that everybody should be penalized, including the youth. So we call that pup laws or youth purchase, use, or possession laws, and our organization does not, will not support any laws because that are, that will penalize minors. They're not an effective approach to reducing youth tobacco use and inappropriately shift the blame for underage tobacco use from the tobacco industry and retailers to young people. Pup laws unfairly punish and stigmatize children, many of whom became addicted at a young age as a result of tobacco industry aggressive marketing to kids, as we have talked about today. In this way, pup laws is a way to shift the blame from industry's irresponsible marketing to its victims, and pup laws also minimize the responsibility of the retailer. So those are just some comments that I have, and I'm available to answer any questions. Thank you so much for the opportunity to testify and support this bill.
All right. Thank you. And this is in support of Bill 187, is that correct?
Yes, my testimony is for 187 and to also address some of the comments, to support 187 and to address some of the comments from some of the testifiers.
Okay. Thank you so much, Cynthia. So I think this bill is pretty straightforward. It basically adopts federal law in regards to prohibiting sale of nicotine tobacco products through vending machines. So I don't have any questions at this time, but if my colleague Senator Brown, if you have any questions or comments.
I'm fine, Madam Chair, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. So again, I just want to thank the committee members that came out to provide testimony, whether written, by written means or orally. And again, I look for my colleagues' support in passage of this bill. So next, we're going to move on to the next, next bill, which is 194-37, sponsored by myself, Sabina Flores Perez, co-sponsored by Speaker Tui Semtulahi and Senator Chris Brown, I'm sorry, Chris Barnett. It's an act amendment, section 6209(c) of Article 2, 6306 and 6308 of Article 3, and amendments section 6401 and 6402 and 6405 all of Article 4, and amend 6603 of Article 6, all of Chapter 6, Title 11, Guam Code Annotated Relative to Updating Fines and Penalties for Tobacco and Nicotine Violations. And so I'd like to provide an introduction. So Bill 194 aims to update and strengthen Guam's tobacco control law by instituting stricter penalties and increased fines for violations pertaining to the sale of tobacco nicotine products to those under 21 years of age and sell by unlicensed persons and to deter subsequent violations. Bill 194-37 aims to mandate education of Guam tobacco control laws and cessation, and of cessation programs for persons violating these laws prior to having their license reinstated. Bill 194 strengthens our tobacco control laws by removing existing language that allows noncompliant businesses to wipe the slate clean after five years, and removes a potential loophole that would allow selling to minors if, quote, "the seller or distributor reasonably believes to be under 27 years of age and is unable to produce acceptable photographic identification and proof that he or she is over the age of 21 years," end quote. Bill 194 proposes to increase fines for the following violations: selling without a license. The first violation, currently at $250, would be increased, is proposed to increase, be proposed to be increased at $5,000. Second violation, an increase from 500 to 10,000, and the business will not be eligible to apply for a license two years after the date of the assessment of a fine. The third violation is from 1,000 to 20,000, and the business will be ineligible to apply for a license for five years. For display, for violations of not displaying the prohibition on the sales of tobacco to persons under 21 years of age, current fine is 50, the bill proposes $500. Selling to persons under 21 years of age, first violation currently is 1,000, proposed is 5,000, with a suspension of 90 days. Second violation, current amount is 2,000, proposed is 10,000, suspension of license for 180 days. Third violation, current language is 5,000, proposed language is 20,000, license revoked and ineligible to apply after five years. The fourth violation has been deleted. For sale and display of tobacco products that are accessible to persons under 21 years of age, current language is $200, proposed language is 2,000. In regards to importing tobacco products, inconsistent with Article 6 of Chapter 26, first violation is not more than $1,000, and a misdemeanor, proposed language is, minimum is 1,000, or set at 1,000, and keeping the language of misdemeanor. Regarding any subsequent violation, the current language is, a person shall be guilty of a felony of a third degree and shall be fined not more than $10,000. Proposed language is the same, except to keep it at 10,000. And it also goes on to say, which is not changed by this bill, or imprisoned for not more than five years or both. So the epidemic of tobacco nicotine use, especially amongst our youth, is alarming. We've heard testimony provided today that 1 in 3 high school students and middle school students are currently using electronic cigarettes. Tobacco-related diseases are the major cause of death on Guam, and tobacco control policies are closely associated with reduction in smoking prevalence and smokeless tobacco use. Again, the age of initiation, we've heard it begin at elementary school age. Nearly 1 in 5 Guam high school students tried cigarette smoking for the first time before the age of 13. Approximately 11% of middle school students tried cigarette smoking before the age of Concerning violations, since 2018, the Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center, in collaboration of the Department of Revenue and Taxation, issued approximately 119 citations to businesses selling tobacco nicotine products on Guam, and violations primarily consisted of underage sales to those under 21 years of age. Recently, in December of 2023, it was reported that one of the tobacco retailers was cited for its fourth offense within a five-year period. Their license was revoked, they were fined $10,000, and barred from being licensed until 2026. According to the World Health Organization Framework Convention on Tobacco Control, it is key to consistently revisit local legislation that governs tobacco and nicotine. Along with taxation, key legislations include the need to update violations to target licensed businesses who choose to violate the law. Bill 194-37 is aligned with these best practices by proposing to increase penalties and fines for those found in violation of Guam's tobacco control laws in order to decrease accessibility to our youth and deter further violations. Bill 194 does not increase fees to those who are licensed and complying with laws. The fees and fines collected shall supplement local government programs to administer prevention and educational programs and fund key enforcement positions in order to protect the health of our youth and our people. Again, I want to thank my co-sponsors, Speaker Tui Semtulahi, Senator Chris Barnett, for recognizing the importance that we must be better stewards of our youth in prevention of tobacco and nicotine use and addiction, and that more must be done to bring attention to this epidemic and bring more resources and support. I look forward to the public's testimony. All right, so at this time, we have, for Bill 194, we have Guam Behavioral Health. You're recognized, Ms. Harrell.
Thank you, Senator. Again, for the record, my name is Sarah Harrell, Acting Supervisor for the Prevention and Training Branch at Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center. I am reading the testimony in behalf of our Director Theresa Areola for the stands of our department. When as an affidavit Senator Perez and committee members, the GIPWIC submits this testimony in favor with recommendations of Bill 194-37, an act to update fines and penalties for tobacco and nicotine violations. If written into law, this bill will improve collaborative efforts to enforce Public Law 34-1 of the Youth Protection Act that limits access to tobacco and electronic nicotine delivery systems or ends to persons 21 or older. I'd like to commend the authors of Bill 194-37 for drafting a bill that recognizes the outdated fines and penalties for tobacco and nicotine retailer violations. GIPWIC leads the annual signer tobacco retailer inspection, as mentioned previously, a mandate from the federal government's public law called the signer amendment, which requires states and territories to establish and enforce the minimum legal age for purchasing and using tobacco products. Signer inspections have been our enforcement tool here in Guam, and it's been conducted annually since 2000. While retailers are fully aware of this periodic inspection, there remain to be repeated violations of businesses selling to underage youth. Between fiscal years 2018 to 2023, our records show 15 retailers who has a history of a second or more violations selling to underage youth. We do not have an account of reasons as to why this is so, but what we know in prevention practice is that such violations may be attributed to two possible reasons. First, the retail store staff are not adequately trained of the law and its requirements, such as 100% ID check. Second, the penalties simply do not outweigh the potential income they can collect if they are not caught. During the FY 2023 inspections, GIPWIC added disposable e-cigarettes in the signer inspection, and as expected, Guam's violation rate increased to 5.2% from 3% in the previous year in 2022. Without proper response and action, Senators, we can only expect these rates to continuously rise, thus affecting our youth's use of tobacco and other nicotine products. While we support the increased rate for violation fees suggested in Bill 194-37, we would also like to bring to your attention portions of this bill that may make it challenging to enforce as a law. First, all retailers selling tobacco and other nicotine products pay only $100 to obtain their license. Along with increasing violation fees and penalties, sound retail licensing laws, according to guidance published by the Preventing Tobacco Addiction Foundation, set an annual licensing fee no lower than $300 for it to be adequate in funding enforcement, inspection, and merchant education. Other states and jurisdictions in the U.S. have fees that are much higher than this amount, and we recommend a similar increase in licensing fees along with the fees and penalties for violations. Second, the bill states that Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center or Department of Public Health and Social Services shall administer an educational program to retailers applying for tobacco licenses and to those cited with violations. While we stand behind the initiative of merchant education, GIPWIC does not have the capacity to identify and purchase rights to facilitate an evidence-based training course for tobacco retail managers and staff. Year-round, we recommend an alternative approach to retailer education similar to how the responsible beverage server training and the health certificate licensing requirements are done, wherein an educational facility such as Guam Community College that is more likely to have staff and resources on hand to offer constant trainings year-round is given the authority to offer retailers training for a nominal fee. Third, licensed retailers must be responsible for training their staff as they are hired, since any and all of their employees are allowed to handle tobacco sales on their behalf. This should be a requirement that retailers train their employees as a condition of receiving a license. Likewise, the retail licensing law should also clearly state that retailers must bear the responsibility of training costs as well as fees and penalties if their establishment receives a violation during their inspection. GIPWIC supports Bill 194-37 in its effort to positively impact youth's use of tobacco nicotine products by improving the enforcement of Guam's tobacco laws. With adjustments, this bill is in line with the best practices in the field of prevention and GIPWIC's current initiatives towards primary prevention and health promotion. When passed into law, this bill will include Guam's local retailers to share in the responsibility of protecting our island youth. Surely, it takes a village to take care of our community and the future of our home island. Thank you for bringing again this initiative up forth for consideration.
This is Ms. Harrell for providing that testimony. Now I'd like to recognize Deputy Attorney General Nishihara.
Thank you, Senators. As previously stated, our office supports the increasing of fines and penalties at this particular time, but just like Guam Behavioral Health, it's the bureaucracy that's added in this bill specifically with regard to the additional training that public health or behavioral health has to do for business organizations. Without a dedicated funding source, they've already stated that they do not have the personnel. The downflow of that effect means when our office is trying to enforce a violation, we can, we can, we can enforce maybe the fine portion, but there is no way for us to enforce the vendor having to attend Guam Behavioral Health because it would be at their schedule. And that would then prevent the next stage, so if it's on violation number two that they needed to get the education, or even if it's violation number three, and five years down the line, they said, we've been trying for three years to be, get this certificate, which behavioral health is not capable of doing, is what they're stating on the record, then it becomes an administrative nightmare when we get taken into court because they've complied with everything, the vendor complied with everything that was required by behavioral health for their violation, but it's because the government couldn't provide the certificate that is required by the law. So that, that is the bureaucracy that's being added, and that's the portion where, just like behavioral health, we are against.
Okay, noted, and I do appreciate the amendments that were provided. I think there's a way to work through this as far as amendments go. Thank you for that. Do you have any further testimony?
No.
That concludes it? Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, there is one other thing, and I apologize, I didn't have time to check. We did notice on page 5, line 2, the requirement for photographic ID, photographic identification was removed. I don't know if that's in any other place of the statute, and like I said, I apologize, I didn't have enough time to check, but that's a very important factor. Otherwise, you could see a vendor saying, are you 21? And the person responding, yes. And because the law doesn't require a photo ID, there's no way to, the vendor to have to, or the businessperson to have to check. But if, if it's in statute, they can say, the law requires me to verify age with a photograph. So I recommend keeping that in somewhere within the legislation instead of deleting it.
Okay, thank you. I have a different read of that, but maybe we could talk about that after. It goes, it flows with the previous sentence. So, yeah, thank you. Okay, so next, we have Cynthia Al. I believe she was going to provide testimony for this bill, is that correct?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you, Chair. Great, perfect. Chair Perez and Senators on the committee, thank you again for letting me testify to comment on Bill 194-37. Tobacco is still the number-one cause of preventable death nationwide, yet the current funding levels for tobacco control programs is not sufficient to prevent and address tobacco-related disparities. The U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention recommends that states annually spend 12% of funds from tobacco taxes and lawsuits on tobacco control programs. However, the reality is that in fiscal year 2022... However, the reality is that in fiscal year 2022, on average, states allocated only 21.7% of the CDC-recommended funding levels nationwide, with state spending varied widely. Preventing youth and young adults from becoming addicted to tobacco products and helping individuals who currently use these products quit requires sustained and increased funding in comprehensive tobacco control programs. Historically, states that have continually invested in their comprehensive tobacco control programs have greater savings. These states have experienced reduced cigarette sales, declining smoking rates among youth and young adults, and smoking attributable healthcare expenditure savings. For every dollar spent on comprehensive tobacco control programs, states receive up to $55 in savings from averted tobacco-related healthcare costs. ACS-CAN would also like to emphasize increased enforcement on licensed retailers of tobacco products, including e-cigarettes and electronic smoking devices, not target individuals. Penalties should be focused on retailers, and wording in the bill should be clarified and amended to refer to any retailer as opposed to person. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on this important matter. Please let me know if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Al, for your testimony. Now, we have last on the list is, checkmark is Janice, but Bistra, you're, or both, are both testifying. Okay, so, Bistra, you're recognized.
Thank you again. In regards to Bill 194-37, unfortunately, I need to rise in opposition, not because I disagree with the bill's intent, quite the opposite, but I do find a little bit of technicalities there that caught my attention, so I just want to point them out, and hopefully we can create a better bill with through amendments. So in Section 6209, Display of License Paragraph C, please make the following correction. Instead of any license, the appropriate term should be licensee. Section 6308, Penalty for Selling Without a License stipulates that any person who violates Section 6201 shall be guilty of misdemeanor. However, the proposed fine of $5,000 is a felony class fee, so we suggest a legal counsel is consulted to make this fine consistent with current Guam law. Section 5, Paragraph A1, The sale or distribution of electronic cigarettes to any person under 21 years of age or its possession by such person is prohibited and shall be regulated and enforced pursuant to this chapter. We suggest that this section is expanded to effectively address possession because current law does not punish effectively possession of tobacco product to minors, which I am a very staunch advocate for. We cannot be raising children without them knowing what the consequences of criminal behavior is, because currently under Guam law, possession of tobacco product is a criminal offense in the eyes of the law. It is, is not legal. So, raising a generation of kids that do not know that criminal activity is punishable, and I strongly disagree with the previous panelist here that says we must only punish the retailers or not any person, well, how do we make sure that we don't have a stop on illegal activity? What if the retailer is someone that sells on TikTok? That's any person, that should be included in the law. I don't think we should admit that. In addition, a different bill by Senator Son Augustine, 193-37, addresses this comprehensively, meaning the possession, and it would be a great idea to combine the efforts of that particular bill in this section as well. It's a great section of Bill 193, so hopefully you guys can work together on this one. It's, I highly recommend that section. Section 5A2 mentions any other component of electronic cigarettes, however, we could not find a definition that covers what component is. So, we strongly feel that this must be corrected to avoid further confusion by our business community. As per the FDA, components are, and as we all know, FDA is the one authority that actually regulates tobacco in the United States and preempts any local law. Examples of components and parts used with ends products includes, but are not limited to, e-liquids, atomizers, batteries with or without variable voltage, cardomizers, atomizer plus replaceable fluid-filled cartridge, digital display lights to adjust settings, scalemizers, tank systems, flavors, vials that contain e-liquid and programmable software. So that definition is there. In addition, this bill proposes a certification from Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center prior to licensing and post violation of the laws prohibiting sale to minors. We have noticed that this is a, there is a redundant requirement due to the fact that after a suspension of a license, a business must reapply and logically get recertified. In addition, this certification will include prevention and cessation of nicotine use and training. We feel that this is counterintuitive to any business engaged in the sale of tobacco and nicotine products. It's like training Burger King on animal cruelty. It's kind of counterintuitive. However, we strongly agree that all tobacco retailers must be trained and certified in knowing current laws pertaining to their industry, specifically the laws pertaining to the sale of tobacco product to minors. I do agree with the previous panelists here that it's an additional bureaucratic measure, and it will need funding, definitely. However, the legislature needs to address that with the funding portion. We anticipate the excise taxes bill being read sometime soon, so hopefully that funding will appear, just to answer the question. I'm talking to you, I'm sorry. So, in addition, we have noticed that the same agency, I'm talking about the Guam Behavioral Health, operates on outdated and frankly misinformed medical science regarding to what ends do and how they are potential harm reduction tool against smoking traditional tobacco. For example, one of their pamphlets claims that ends causes popcorn lung. To date, there isn't one recorded medical case in the world that directly connects vaping and popcorn lung. Please note that, and I have a myriad of other problems with the misinformation that is being constantly, constantly regurgitated, time and time again. I have a stack of medical science that can basically disprove any of those claims, and I'm more than ready to present it when the time comes. We strongly oppose certification by such an agency unless, very big unless, their medical science is updated and in sync with the FDA, the CDC, and the WHO's official stance on the benefits of switching to electronic nicotine delivery systems by current and former tobacco smokers. Very, very important. Let's not kill the adult, huh? We want to help everyone to stay away from the tobacco stick, because this is truly in line with tobacco harm reduction efforts. Isn't tobacco harm reduction the number-one goal of any agency that purports public health? All the aforementioned agencies, the FDA, the CDC, and WHO, have funded and conducted various studies relatives to the potential harm of ends use, and all agencies agree to a certain point that ends as a general class have markedly less risk than a combustible cigarette product. Furthermore, all of these agencies that I mentioned agree that e-cigarettes expose users to fewer harmful chemicals than traditional cigarettes. Yes, breathing clean air is the best way to do it, but there are a lot of people who are in their 50s, in their 60s, in their 40s, that have been hooked on nicotine by smoking traditional cigarette. Are we to completely discount them? We need to help those people to stay away from the harmful 9,000 chemicals in a cigarette smoke. And let me just give you a comparison, in an electronic nicotine delivery system, the vapor produces about 2,000. So 9,000 versus 2,000, yes, sometimes we need to choose the lesser of the devils, but that's the science. Furthermore, all agencies agree that this is the potential, one of the potential best tools in the harm reduction toolbox. In conclusion, I really want to again reiterate, Senator Perez, I would like to have this bill improved, but again, I generally, I do agree with the intent, and I thank you for raising the issue today.
All right, thank you, Ms. Mediola, for your testimony. So this question is for Nishihara, Attorney Nishihara. So we have two opposing sides here in regards to, so in regards to infractions by individuals for, you know, what do you believe as far as enforcement amongst minors? So if minors are selling the product themselves to other minors, you know, we have one stance where we don't penalize the minors, and then we have the other stance where you do penalize the minors. What is the position of the Attorney General's office?
If the minors violating law should be penalized accordingly. It'll be held in family court, though, as opposed to, you know, the open public court.
And then this question is for Ms. Al. So I, you know, I hear your testimony in regards to this. Can you provide some more background information on why American Cancer Society's position is not to penalize minors if they are actually engaged in selling of these devices to their peers?
Thank you for the opportunity to respond. So again, like what I had said before, tobacco, I'm just going to reiterate, like tobacco companies and their allies have a history of supporting penalties against minors laws as alternatives to other laws that would produce greater declines in youth smoking. So they're shifting the conversation and saying that it is, you know, the, the minor's fault for using the tobacco product. But again, as we had heard through testimony from Youth Congress and others, that, you know, there's advertising that gets kids, there's social pressures that make kids start to use these products, and finally, the ingredient itself, nicotine, is very and highly addictive. And so there's all these ways in which the kids are being tempted or prompted to use these products, and it's not their fault that they are because of just the addictive nature and what, what they're seeing, and it's happening. So instead, we should shift the penalties to retailers. They are the ones, and the tobacco industry is also the ones that are trying to just not take responsibility for what's happening. We've seen that penalizing children is not an effective strategy for reducing youth smoking, and some experts argue that pup laws could actually detract from more effective enforcement measures and tobacco control efforts. So instead, you know, the, how the, what the AG was just saying is that, you know, the kids should be punished, but again, if for every, there's one in every three kids are using these tobacco products, are they going, is the AG, or are we going to spend all this time in court punishing kids versus going after the retailers or making other rules that would benefit society as a whole? I, I hope that makes sense.
Yes, thank you for that clarification. Okay, the other question regards to certification, so upon licensure. So, yeah, the reason, the intention behind this is that we want the businesses to become compliant, right? And they are the first line of defense in some ways, I mean, other than the families, of course, and so we, we expect them to comply. And upon licensure, that's why it's codified, so I understand that currently exists, that there are the team that goes out, they do provide brochures and education, but what this bill would do, it would codify that process. But I do understand that perhaps a third-party vendor like, you know, the Safe Serve Alcohol Server, we could follow that model, so it doesn't fall in the hands of an agency. So I appreciate that, that recommendation. Okay, I would like to open up my, the floor to my colleague, Senator Brown, if you have any questions. Okay, thank you. All right, so we do look forward to also looking at defining what is covered by this act, considering there are a lot of changes that are occurring, and that's something we'll work with our community stakeholders. I guess a question for Ms. Mediola, considering that the high use of, what is it, ends products amongst our youth, electronic cigarettes amongst our youth, and considering the testimony that was provided by Dr. DeVito, that the, the most effective way to stop youth use is modeling it, so an adult that ends their use can also model that behavior for our youth. And so right now, we are experiencing one in every three, those that took this, one in every three high schoolers, one in every three middle schoolers are current users. And, you know, considering the, the mental, I'm sorry, the physical effect that these youth are, they're still undergoing development, and so the impact to them is much greater. As a business, are you willing to promote cessation? I mean, I know, I think I heard it in your testimony that, I don't know if I heard it correctly, but, you know, are you, are you open to promoting cessation amongst adults?
Amongst adults? Cessation of tobacco cigarette or nicotine in general?
Nicotine tobacco use, basically what, you know, what we're, what these bills were inspired by was the alarming statistics.
Okay. I do understand the confusion, because it is very evident so far from everyone's commentary that we are continuously bundling two very different products. As, actually, I kind of agree with Ms. Al earlier when she pointed out that tobacco cigarette and ends are not the same products. I agree with that. The traditional cigarette never changed for over 100 years. The traditional cigarette provides the nicotine together with the 9,000 chemicals in the volatile organic compounds that are contained in the smoke. The electronic nicotine delivery device contains the vapor that delivers nicotine, but nicotine itself is not the cancerous substance that causes death or disease. So therefore, we must distinguish the two products. Would I advocate for tobacco cigarette smoking? Absolutely. As a former smoker, as someone who thought that I would die with a cigarette in my mouth, and I stopped smoking traditional cigarette only through electronic nicotine delivery vape device because I was trying to stop cessation, stop smoking via everything else, the nicotine gum, the nicotine patch, it didn't work for me. And finally, when I was introduced to the next option as a, as a possible, possible tool for me to quit forever tobacco cigarette smoking, absolutely, I took it, and it worked for me. And as I mentioned earlier, yet again, I'm going to reiterate that nicotine addiction is lifelong addiction, but so is caffeine. There are some people that are addicted to caffeine. Alcohol could also be highly addictive. So yes, I would definitely advocate, as I have been advocating for cessation of tobacco cigarette smoking. Complete nicotine cessation is the ideal scenario for a former tobacco cigarette smoker. However, many people will continuously need to battle that nicotine addiction. It is possible through electronic nicotine delivery devices to lower down the nicotine intake, and many people actually successfully have quit nicotine use. I know people like that. It is possible. However, I want to point out that I could do this only within adult setting, because what Big Tobacco did back in the day, I don't know if you remember, they had a, a program that was supposedly directed towards the youth use of tobacco cigarettes. They went around the cigarettes, I mean, they went around the schools, and they were saying, you know, don't do this because, you know, it's, it's bad for you. And in essence, they were technically promoting that product in front of the children, because, you know, what children would do, hmm, what's that? They're telling me not do, not to do it. Well, I'm going to do it. You know, it kind of may have the opposite effect. So I will oppose any campaigning in front of children, because that is one tactic that Big Tobacco did, and we are against Big Tobacco, believe it or not. So we're not going to use their tactics. So I hope that answers the question. So I hope that answers the question.
Yeah, well, I just maybe can clarify a little bit more. So you said, you yourself said that a lot of this product is coming from the household. And so, you know, what's really critical to stem this epidemic is that we need to address the adults. And so my question is really based on that, is whether you, as, you know, if you want to promote responsible, more responsible use, to promote cessation with adults because they're then going to model that with the youth, which are, you know, have epidemic proportions of electronic cigarettes use. So would you?
Yes, the ultimate goal is to decrease nicotine intake, absolutely. And there are ways to do that. We can only educate the customers as to how can, you can decrease your nicotine intake because it's just like a nicotine gum. I don't know if you're familiar with the product, but the nicotine gum contains anywhere from 14 to, you know, gradual decrease in the nicotine. So that could be, that could be done in other setting. But it's ultimately, yes, the little kids will always mimic what the adults are doing. And anyone that disagrees with this notion probably lives under a rock or is not a parent, so.
Okay, well, thank you.
Chair, may I say something?
Sorry, do we have Cynthia?
Yes, thank you so much. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to comment on something. I just pulled up the CDC website, and I'm just going to read what it says on the website. It says, "E-cigarettes are not currently approved by the FDA as a smoking, as a quit-smoking aid. The U.S. Preventative Services Task Force, a group of health experts that make recommendations about preventive healthcare, has concluded that evidence is insufficient to recommend e-cigarettes for smoking cessation in adults, including pregnant adults." It also says, "A recent CDC study found that many adults are using e-cigarettes in an attempt to quit smoking. However, most adult e-cigarette users do not stop smoking cigarettes and are instead continuing to use both products, known as dual use. Dual use is not an effective way to safeguard your health, whether you are using e-cigarettes, smokeless tobacco, or other tobacco products in addition to regular cigarettes." So that was what was on the CDC website. But no tobacco company as of date has actually tried to submit their product to the FDA for approval as a cessation device. So if there is any commentary about these e-cigarette products or electronic smoking devices is a safer and better way and helps people to quit, like, no tobacco company has actually submitted their product as a cessation device to go through the process, the rigorous process by the FDA to see and test whether or not this is true. So I just wanted to address what the panelists was saying. Thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you so much, Cynthia.
I would like to interject. I appreciate the testimony, but I really, I'm not appreciative of the back-and-forth debate. I mean, we're here to take testimony. Madam Chair, and I'm the only remaining, I'm not even a member of your committee, but I'm here. And I would like to get to the root of the last bill on the agenda while I'm still here. I appreciate, and I understand their differing views, but I don't need to hear the constant back and forth on every single piece of bill that we're looking at. I think we got that. I'd just like to get to the crux of the bill that's before us, please, if we can move on.
Is it possible for me to, I mean, the other two had a second round, and it's nothing to do with good or bad, if it may, it should be relatively short.
What are you proposing?
So a very quick input. The master settlement agreement, which is what we get from tobacco, was brought against tobacco manufacturers because they represented the product was safe. And they continued to represent, and then we brought suit because the states, including Guam, were suffering great costs to now treat the people who were as a result of sickness. What we have is a very similar product with these new e-cigarettes. We don't know because we don't have that long, long studies right now. We do know that there are some short-term effects. But what we do know for sure is cigarette sales have gone down. The other thing we do know is we have increased the tax of cigarettes and the cost. Those are facts that irrespective sort of, is this safe, not safe, is a fact. So AG Moylan has brought out, look, the least amount of bureaucracy involved is just increasing tax. If we've increased taxes for cigarettes and you've got a product that now is reduced in the number of sale, increased cost for the e-cigarettes may produce the same outcome. So that's why we have stated the increase of tax is the least administratively difficult thing to implement. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mendiola, you signed up for testimony? Did you want to provide testimony at this time?
I don't want to bore Senator Brown on their other stuff. I mean that with respect. That's why I thought when I came here, we were supposed to speak on the bill. It seems like there's a campaign of other issues aside from the bill's intent, its content. And in terms of the bill, I have to say, and this is with 19437, definitely, the agencies involved with cessation need to update their own studies completely. And I'm talking about not just with the CDC and the FDA, also to include the National Academy of Sciences, all the Cochrane Institute, and these are the gold standards in the medical professional field. There, there's got to be some sort of due diligence, if you will, especially with respect to any type of legislation affect, or public policy affecting alternatives to already-known cancer-killing cigarettes. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to provide testimony? Okay, so we're going to close on this bill. Just want to thank everybody, everybody that's here today to provide testimony. Again, the Epi Profile Statistics are a call to action by our community to address nicotine consumption, especially amongst our youth, which has been reported as early as elementary school age. The harm of use and addiction to tobacco nicotine is longer-lasting in youth, especially with brain development still in progress. Some studies have shown that teens experience an enhanced response to tobacco and nicotine exposure that makes them more vulnerable to addiction and it can impair their cognitive development. Furthermore, addiction at a young age can be more difficult to overcome. Prevention is absolutely necessary, and Bill 194 proposes to increase penalties and fines for persons who sell to minors with the intention to deter any and subsequent violations of our tobacco nicotine control laws in order to reduce access to those under 21 years of age, in order to protect the health and well-being of our youth and our community. So the last item of our agenda is Bill 195-37 LS, sponsored by myself, Senator Sabina Flores Perez, and co-sponsored by Speaker Theresa M. Terlahi, Senator Chris Barnett. It's an act to add Section 6101M and 6101N to Article 1, to add 6408 and 6409 to Article 4, all of Chapter 6, Title 11, Guam Code annotated relative to regulating tobacco nicotine advertisements. So some brief remarks. Bill 195 aims to strengthen our current tobacco control statute by restricting advertisement of tobacco nicotine products, thus reducing attractiveness and accessibility of these products, especially to our youth. In 2009, policymakers in the U.S. mainland found that unfair deceptive trade practices, as well as a narrow set of FDA regulations prohibiting false, misleading advertising and authorized modified risk claims, allowed major tobacco companies to target vulnerable consumers through strategic product placements. In response to these deceptive trade practices, Congress enacted H.R. 1256. Bill 195 aims to adopt provisions of the Family Smoking Tobacco Control Act of 2009 that prohibit advertising of tobacco nicotine products, including electronic cigarettes using television, radio, billboards, transit ads pursuant to the Federal Trade Commission regulations and provisions of the Tobacco Master Settlement Agreement. Bill 195 proposes the following to restrict point-of-sale advertisements within six feet, except with nicotine replacement therapy. Persons who violate these restrictions shall be fined with $2,000 for the first violation, their license being suspended for 90 days, fined $5,000, and suspended for 180 days. With a third violation, a $10,000 fine and license revoked, and the inability to reapply for two years following. So the bill proposes that tobacco ends products not be displayed and located in an area to persons that are accessible to persons under the age of 21. And the bill proposes that any violation by, in this section, shall be also required to be, undergo certification through Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center or Department of Public Health. The importance of this bill is to further protect our island's youth from targeted marketing and advertisements. Again, the 2021 epidemiological profile shows alarming statistics. Electronic cigarette use is high amongst our youth, one in three now we hear of high school students, and one in three of middle school students reported current use. And the age of initiation, nearly one in five of Guam high school students tried cigarette smoking for the first time before the age of 13, and roughly 11% of middle school students tried cigarette smoking before the age of 11. In Guam, indirect advertising for tobacco, it's hard to miss. Plastered on retailer buildings within point-of-sale, all customers will be indirectly affected of tobacco products. I'd like to thank my co-sponsors, Speaker Theresa M. Terlahi and Senator Chris Barnett, as well for co-sponsoring this legislation, and I look forward to testimony provided here today. So currently, we have, again, Ms. Harrell for your testimony and representation of Guam Behavioral Health. You're recognized.
Thank you, Senator Perez. Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center submits its testimony in support with recommendations of Bill 195-37 relative to regulating tobacco and nicotine advertisements among Guam retailers. If written into law, this bill will build additional safeguards in our environment community that prevent and reduce tobacco use among Guam's youth. We commend the authors of the bill for recognizing the importance of limiting exposure to tobacco and e-cigarette advertising in Guam, especially for our most vulnerable population. Advertising plays a valuable role in enticing young persons into trying tobacco or electronic delivery devices or ends, at an age when they are not physiologically ready to process and control it. Research proves that the younger a person starts nicotine use, the higher the likelihood of them experiencing addiction as adults. Studies also show that children's brains are not fully developed until early adulthood, which explains deficient critical thinking skills and inhibitions, as well as risk-taking behaviors during their teenage years. Even if retailers claim that their hard push for marketing their products are not intended for young audiences, the fact is that the youth are not exempt from being exposed and enticed by these advertisements. Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center leads the SINAR program wherein unannounced inspections are facilitated annually among licensed retailers of tobacco products to enforce public policies prohibiting sales to anyone under the age of 21. In this process, inspectors also observe environmental factors that influence tobacco use among unintended audiences, such as advertising practices. During the past inspection in fiscal year 2023, out of the 324 licensed retailers, more than half, or 57%, that's 184 retailers in Guam, displayed up to five tobacco advertisements around their establishment. 5% or 16 retailers had six or more, and these local advertisements are a mix of tobacco and other nicotine products. The U.S. FDA subcontracted Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center to enforce the advertising restrictions for retailers of nicotine products in Guam. These inspections include event sponsorships, use of brand name, logo, symbol, motto, et cetera, in terms and services, free sample restrictions, and format and display requirements for required warning statements on advertisements. These restrictions apply to retailers of all nicotine products, to include cigarettes, smokeless tobacco, and ends. Additionally, the U.S. FDA provides more guidance for retailers of ends that mix e-liquids, make or modify vaporizers, or mix loose tobacco in their establishments. These restrictions are listed on the FDA website and are included as supplemental documents in our written testimony. And for the record, it's the webpage on the FDA website for advertising and promotion restrictions, as well as regulations for pipe, cigar, and vape shops that are regulated as both retailers and manufacturers. Although Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center is in support of Bill 195, based on our experience with the SINAR program and the FDA subcontract, I would like to highlight these points that may make this bill challenging to enforce as a public policy. First, there are no assigned authorities and resources to enforce the advertising regulations and penalties for violations. We recommend that a year-round program is established by or between the Department of Revenue and Taxation and our agency, Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center, to facilitate such activities to be sustained by local appropriations. Second, in line with federal regulations enforced by the FDA, there must be a clear, comprehensive definition for nicotine products that includes cigarettes, cigars, smokeless tobacco, pipes, rolling papers, electronic nicotine devices, related liquids, and other related devices written to capture all known and future products. Lastly, we implore that regulations imposed on the bill mirror the federal regulations that U.S. FDA enforced throughout the country, including Guam. Consistency is key in keeping our community safe from unintended harms caused by products sold and marketed by our local retailers. JIPIC recognizes that Bill 195 intends to contribute to the prevention and reduction of youth use of nicotine in Guam. With the recommended adjustments, our government will be able to effectively enforce these regulations while being in line with the regulations set forth by a federal counterpart. Thank you for bringing forth this initiative to the committee and for the community for collective review.
Sis Massey, Ms. Harrell, for your testimony on behalf of the Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center. Okay, next we have, who's next? Fred Nishihara.
Thank you, Senator. As previously testified, although we support generally the regulation of advertising for the e-cigarettes or nicotine cessation-type products, this particular provisions also add additional bureaucracy, as just explained by Behavioral Health, the people on the ground, the enforcement officers there, and the downstream ramification for our office, in other words, attorneys prosecute or hold these violations, even if it's at the administrative level. So given the shortage of attorneys that occur throughout the government of Guam, not just our office, the judiciary, the public defenders, the agencies that are unable to fill the positions, this would be very difficult for our office to continue to enforce if it became law. I mean, that's just reality, and especially if this is supported only with fines and fees, as opposed to what I had mentioned earlier, a stream of funds coming maybe from taxes, including taxing the liquid products. That's certainly within your purview. What we are seeing is the practicality of enforcing would be difficult. So we're not, we're not against the intent of it. It's how do you perform this without additional appropriation, just exactly what Guam Behavioral Health has said.
All right, Sis Massey.
I should say one other thing. Notwithstanding what I just testified, I also did notice that besides the traditional advertisements that are requested, I didn't see social media, which my understanding is social media is, especially for the youth, the primary way they get their advertisements. So I would recommend, notwithstanding like what I said, that if this bill does move forward, that social media be addressed as part of the advertising regulation. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much, Attorney Nishihara. Next we have on our list Janice Mendiola.
Good afternoon, Senators. Last one, hurrah. The State Epidemiological Outcomes Work Group Data, Guam Youth Risk Behavior Surveillance. I'm looking at it right now in the CDC. These are, this is sent from Guam, and it's exactly what I've been trying to say for quite some time already, from the past three legislations. You will note that it identifies tobacco use, and it has multiple categories. Ever tried smoking a cigarette, even one or two puffs, first tried cigarette smoking before age 13 years old, even one or two puffs, and goes on to, with respect to tobacco use, to include ever used electronic vape And goes on to, with respect to tobacco use, to include ever used electronic vapor products. And in it, it says, "including e-cigarettes, vapes, vape pens, e-cigarettes, e-hookers, hookah pens, and mods such as Juul, Smox, or Vus and Blue." Again, it follows and mirrors the same flow with respect to use, trying it, how long, how many puffs. And really what it comes down to is it's the vapor products that are being mentioned, and vape in general, for those who do not use it. The assumption is that the content inside includes all these things, okay, that I just mentioned, includes it all. Okay, this is submitted from Guam to the CDC. This is, in fact, in the intent on the YRBS, which is the Guam Youth Risk Behavior Surveillance Survey. And I gotta point it out, I mean, you're actually, the discussion is actually talking about vape in general, which is a device for creating vapor, but there is so much types of products out there that it's targeting one particular nicotine device, saying that all represents nicotine, when in fact, in the survey that is being submitted from Guam to the CDC, it includes all other things. And what's strange in here is it doesn't include cannabis. And we know from until our middle school and teasing high school, that had cannabis. So if they want to submit data and information, they need to be honest with what they're saying when they use the word vape, and they use the word vapor, and what the content is. The numbers with respect to what's being submitted in the Guam Department of Education, what number of that is nicotine, what number of that is cannabis, what number of that is hookah, what number of that is cigar, e-cigaret? So basically, where is this data coming from and what does it say? And then as to the bill, I'll come up front with you on this. My son and I went to a gas station, of course. My son goes and gets his drink. I said, hey, go get a drink. And then after that, he comes up as I'm searching for what I want, and it had alcohol in it. And I was like, what in the world are you doing with that? He goes, oh daddy, it looks just like the, you know, that little monster, you know, the cartoon. And I go, that is alcohol, boy. Put that thing back. So, you know, you want to talk about advertisements, right? The product is being available for anyone to grab off the shelves. You walk through the door, you can actually go to the reefer, and anyone could go in there. No one's stopping nobody. And when we go to the register, what do we see? There's chew, snuff, all this other stuff, all out there. And if you want to talk about advertisements, you know, maybe it's about time you guys put it in adult-only stores. I mean, I wouldn't say, when I grew up, I was a comic book collector. I loved comics. I loved to read. I loved Popular Science back in the day. My dad got me to that. But there was this thing called "adults only" on the very top of the comic books. I was a kid, I was like, what the hell is "adults only"? Is that a new comic book? Yeah, I'm sure you guys can deductively reason what that meant, "adults only," okay? But that curiosity is because it was available. It was just above Comic Books, Popular Science, and there's "adult only" with a big cardboard, "adult only." I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Ms. Mediola, do you have any testimony you'd like to provide?
Thank you again. So I'm not going to bore you with any advocacy on my behalf. I strictly want to talk about the legal, possible legal ramifications. As I stated earlier, I do fully agree with the intent. However, when we're looking at it from a legal standpoint of view, I do see a few things that might be challenging for the government when it comes to restricting advertising, although I really want to see all of those posters taken down, believe me, I do. So let me just point out what I do see as a possible hurdle in a future potential litigation against the government of Guam, because it has been done in the states, and we might want to be prepared and anticipate any possible litigation. Let me just get to it right there. So when we're restricting advertising in general, we may come into the issue of restricting the so-called commercial speech, freedom of speech, and that is the First Amendment violation. In the past, many companies, to include tobacco companies, have used that defense in court of law, and I do suggest that the legislature consults with legal counsel if that particular piece of legislation may be a potential litigation threat. Also, there are other issues that I do foresee, not only on the First Amendment clause, but it could be also on the Fourteenth Amendment clause, which is equal protection under the law. So let me just give you an example when I mean a potential litigation challenge. There have been many challenges in the course to date, so legal precedents is here. The Supreme Court established the standard that generally governs government restrictions on commercial speech. In 1980, Central Hudson Gas and Electric Corp. versus Public Service Commission was the first case that actually strictly started regulate the protection of commercial speech. Prior to that, the government basically could restrict that speech, but the higher courts took note, and today, businesses, including tobacco, might be better protected than before. So keep that in mind. Also, I'll give you another litigation example, is the 44 Liquor Mart Inc. versus Rhode Island. The court struck down the state's ban on advertisement that provided truthful information about liquor prices, and those pertain to outside posters. Same type of defense could be brought against the government of Guam, because when we're prohibiting the advertisement of certain product, that could be construed in two different ways. Are we constricting the content, or we're constricting the place of advertisement? And in legal language, that could be also a problem. So just letting you know, ma'am, I hope that we can create a better legislation, truthfully. So when we talk about advertising and marketing, do we want to be absolutely clear about what to advertise is and what to market is? Because I've heard on two different occasions today and in the past debate that was organized in the UOG, that just presenting a product itself or the product itself is a marketing I kind of disagree with that stance, because on top of all the hats that I've been wearing as a mother, I did serve as a marketing manager, so I do understand what advertisement and marketing is. And frankly, just carrying around a product could not be construed legally as a marketing, because here we're trying to do a legislative effort, a piece of legislation. We're not in the debate of what one is, and when we're trying to create legislation, let's be very clear to the people so that we're not coming back with, you know, more confusion. So we propose that this bill includes a thorough definitions of what the legislature would mean by advertise and market, and also who. Because under federal standards, there are certain restrictions on manufacturers, but certain retailers can advertise. So we want to make sure that this particular bill covers all the intent specifically and stipulate all of the parties involved, because currently, as it is written, it is like a general idea, strictly to advertise and market. Who? Is it the manufacturer? Is it the retailer? Is it any person? Let's be a little bit more defined in that paragraph. Section 6408 also needs to be further assessed to determine what the intent is, and we agree that we need to remove the tobacco posters from the outside walls. However, the language does not clearly communicate this. As it is currently written, advertising is prohibited within six feet of a POS. And when we go back into the intent, I think we talked about the posters and the indirect and direct advertisement, but when we go to the actual piece of legislation, the outside posters are not clearly communicated, and it only pertains to six feet within a POS. And also, that might cause a little bit more confusion in certain stores, because, as I said, we need to clearly define what marketing is, because marketing could be also construed as selling. As one of the dictionaries also does say, the marketing is the engaging of the business of selling. So are we going to place the product somewhere where they are not visible within six feet? Or are we placing a, what exactly are we prohibiting from? You see where I'm going with this? Can we get a bit more clear on what exactly the law intends to prohibit? Because it's very, very general, and anyone that reads it will not be able to understand what exactly we're trying to prohibit and what are we removing? So I'm not going to bore you with the definitions. I will provide you with my written testimony, but I have some of the definitions of advertising and marketing for, you know, your review. And typically, when we talk about advertisements, we do mean something that has been paid for. So keep that in mind. And currently, I just want to reiterate, I've said that during that debate, actually, I talked about advertising and marketing, and I lifted my hands and I said, what kind of advertisement are you guys talking about? Have you ever seen a TV ad that contains tobacco or electronic nicotine cigarette ad? Have you ever heard a commercial jingle playing on the radio? Have you ever seen, and I'm talking specifically about ends, because, you know, everything was directed towards the ends, but have you ever seen any electronic nicotine device being advertised by a paid advertisement anywhere? Even if you attempt to advertise on Facebook, you will be flagged, just to let you know. Instagram, if you attempt to advertise tobacco, you will be flagged. So to answer your social media concern, paid advertisement is not allowed online. Keep that in mind as well. And in closing, again, appreciate the effort, Madam Chair, and I wish to be able to help you through further communication and creating a much better bill for our community and specifically achieve the much desired goal of keeping any tobacco or nicotine product away from kids, because I believe that the law is very clear. It is prohibited. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that testimony. So just a question regards to, you know, it's been said that perhaps just even having a cabinet where you can't, because the product itself is advertisement, right? So, you know, perhaps having like a cabinet where it conceals the actual product. Is this something that's, I guess, something that we can amend this bill to do? And is this?
I understand, I'm sorry. I understand what, I'm sorry. I understand what you're saying, but when I was researching specifically on advertisement, there was a lawsuit that actually tackled exactly that. If you're trying to conceal the tobacco product, one company won in court, because when they're displaying their product, they're displaying it for adult usage. So the court agreed that this prohibition, it prevents adults from clearly seeing what the product is. It's a very interesting issue that arises here, but being the devil's advocate and trying to help you understand that this is a very complicated legal issue, specifically if we're talking about battling tobacco companies. They have the means to do so, they have the means to battle you financially, and unfortunately, there are many precedents in the lower and the higher courts that they may use as a defense. So if we're trying to lock, under lock and key, and kind of hide the product itself, it might be challenged, because it's not visible to the intended user, which is the adult. There are ways to tackle this, and we will hopefully meet additionally with presenting more ideas, but as it stands today, unfortunately, I have to point it out, it's a very tough cookie to crack, because there is legal precedent in court.
Yes, do you have a response to that?
If I may add to that.
Yes, thank you.
I wanted to share that with the tobacco industry, they call that the power wall, wherein they provide, there is a wall basically of all of the tobacco products being, like I said, packaging itself as advertising and marketing. And studies have shown that removing the power wall have significantly removed or reduced adolescents' susceptibility to future cigarette smoking compared to leaving it exposed. So some research information to provide some support of removing that, either putting it behind the counter, moving it in the sidewall where it's not exposed to majority of youth or unintended audiences. If I am to go to a store and I know what I'm buying, I don't need to see the packaging. I know it's going to be, for example, a Coke Light, right? I don't need to see it in the display. But having it displayed means that they are trying to entice people to buy the products. So having it hidden would be the most effective means of removing it from sight of unintended audiences.
Yeah, I agree, because, you know, we all know the impulse products are right up the cash register. And so especially if someone's trying to quit, right? This is not a good prompt. Anyway, thank you. I just want to open the floor to my colleagues, Senator Brown, if you have any questions or comments.
I don't have any questions. I appreciate the input and the dialogue, and I understand, it's an ongoing debate. It will continue depending on what side of the issue you are on, but certainly appreciate all of you taking the time and effort to come down here. Thank you. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you, Senator Brown. If there are no further testimonies, these bills are duly heard, but I do appreciate, for those that would like to send in their testimony, we are still accepting any written testimony and any amendments that you would like to provide to the committee. We are accepting them. You can send them by email to office@senatorparas.org, or you can mail them here or hand-deliver them to the Guam Congress Building. We are accepting written testimony until 4:00 PM Tuesday, December 19th, 2023. Please address all testimony to Senator Sabina Flores Perez, Chairperson of the Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics Research, and Planning. And we will now adjourn. The time is now 4:59. It's Ms. Harrell. Have a good evening.